Good evening. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that elected officials will have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on the agenda item tonight, please go to the table on my left and sign up to speak. For those wishing to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Each side, those speaking in favor of an item and those speaking in opposition to an item will have 10 minutes to present each side. The time will be divided among all members wishing to speak. Finally, all motions are stated in affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Freeman. Mr. Gauch.
President.
Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Present.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
Ms. Huff.
Ms. Hyman.
Present.
Mr. Keating. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Riley. Mr. Van. Mr. Whitley.
Here.
Ms. Wonders.
President.
And clerk, we have excused absence for Commissioner Gibbs, Commissioner Van, and Commissioner Huff.
Thank you.
And I, well Commissioner, Charlie's on his way in, okay?
Okay.
He said he may not. Yeah, he said he wasn't sure what it was gonna be here now. And I'd also like to state last month when Commissioner Whitley was not with us, that was due to an heart attack. And he just recently got out of the hospital after 28 days, and he thank you for being Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners. Pat Young with the Planning Department. Do have one requested adjustment, which would be to move item 8A, which is a resolution honoring Commissioner Hollingsworth for his service, to immediately following this item, so that would become item 5, and then all the other items would move down accordingly. Can also certify for the record that all public hearing items before you tonight have been advertised in accordance with the requirements of law and their affidavits to that effect on file with the Planning Department. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a special request concerning item 6 on the agenda. This is TC 15501. Because this is after we hold a public hearing on this item, because it is such a long document with so many considerations, I would appreciate it if we could kind of go through that page by page and call upon Commissioners to ask their questions that way rather than try to discuss everything at one time and have people flipping back and forth through the document.
Okay. Okay, are there other adjustments to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion that we approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
All those in favor of the adjusted agenda, please let it be known by raising the right hand.
Was there, who made the second on that motion? Thank you.
And it passed. So the motion passes.
Ten.
Ten to zero. So if I could have Commissioner Hollingsworth join me down there. So, most of you don't know, but tonight will be Commissioner Hollingsworth's last night. He has better opportunities than green pastures elsewhere. So he, this is his night, last night with us. So because this is his last night, it's a resolution and appreciation for Mr. Joshua Hollingsworth, whereas Mr. Joshua Hollingsworth was a member of the Durham Planning Commission from June 2014 through November 2015, and whereas the Durham Planning Commission and the citizens of the city and county of Durham have benefited from the dedicated efforts that he displayed while serving as a member of the Durham Planning Commission, and whereas the commission desire to express its appreciation for the public for a job well done. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Durham Planning Commission that this commission do hereby express its sincere appreciation for the services rendered by Mr. Hollingsworth to the citizens of this community. That the clerk for the commission is hereby directed to spread this resolution in its entirety upon the official minutes of this commission, and this resolution is hereby presented to Mr. Hollingsworth as a token of the high esteem held for him, adopted the 10th day of November 2015. David Harris, the chair.
I've really enjoyed it. I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the previous resolution.
Second. It's been motioned second, remove the previous resolution. All those in favor of the previous resolution, let it be known by a short right hand. All those in opposition? It passes ten to one. Ten to, ten to zero. Okay, the chair will now have opened a public hearing for zoning map case Z1500020. Rose Walker, huh? Pardon me? Oh, we did not. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir, before we open the public hearing, could we get a motion to approve the minutes from the last, from the October meeting?
Move to approve.
Make a motion to approve it with one little modification.
Return the motion.
With one small modification, I think on the, under new business, we had a motion about the language that was presented by the, for a statement on behalf of the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. It says, "The Durham City County Planning Commission supports language presented," and I think what we were actually voted on was adding the language presented to the omnibus text amendment. And so I'd like to insert those, certain adding, and then between supports and language, and then to the omnibus text amendment.
Any other observations about the minutes?
I just have one small adjustment. On the members present for October 2015, it has my name under present and under absent. I was absent last month.
Thank you. Hold on, I have two, two comments. Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, my name is not under members present. I would like it to be added as I was present.
Okay. Madam Clerk. Okay, Charlie?
I just wanted to make one comment about my vote. Is this mic on?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment about my vote. I was the only dissenting vote at, I wanted to, I just wanted to say I do support affordable housing. I guess it was one of my cockamamie notions. I wanted that to sort of stand out as sort of a marker, as, you know, we have reviewed four proposed transit hubs so far, and there have been some other issues, other developments that we have, that have been talked about, and we're still no further along in a solution. And I just wanted to voice my support for that. You know, affordable housing, poverty, homelessness, they're all there in, together, and, well, I just wanted to voice my support for affordable housing. But I, I know I can't change my vote, but I don't want to because I still want it to stand as that sort of reminder. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes with the corrections made. All those in favor, please let it be known by a short right hand.
It's unanimous, ten to zero.
Okay, so the motion passed. Now we will open the public hearing for the Rose Walk Club Boulevard, Z150020.
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, Pat Young with the Planning Department. I wanted to introduce Kyle Taylor, who's going to be presenting this item. Kyle is a recent addition to our staff. He's originally from Morehead City, went to college at App State, and was most recently planning director down in the Moore County town of Whispering Pines, and we're very happy to have him with us. And I just wanted to introduce him briefly before I turn the floor over to Kyle.
As Pat just stated, my name is Kyle Taylor. Good evening, and I will be presenting case Z15020, Rose Walk Club Boulevard. And to start out, the applicant for this application is Colter Jewel Tames, and this project is within the city of Durham. The request is for, to move the existing zoning of Residential Rural 5 and Residential Rural 5-2 to PDR 10.8. The site acreage for the project is 5.59, and the proposed use of this project is for a future residential development. The site is located in the urban tier on West Club Boulevard between New, North Duke Street and Rufton Street, with frontage on West Club Boulevard and North Duke Street. The site is comprised of a total of seven parcels and an existing right-of-way, and we'll get back to the existing right-of-way here in a minute. The development, the proposed development does meet the PDR standards and has a proposed density of 10.8 dwelling units per acre. These are the existing conditions, although they appear a little hard to see up there. It, site is heavily wooded and is vacant for the most part. The elevation does change fairly dramatically throughout the project as a whole, and there are two parcels that front on West Club Boulevard that do have houses on them, and those are 708 and 710 West Club Boulevard. This is the proposed conditions for the site. As you can see, the proposed conditions are two site access arrows, the location, the approximate location of tree preservation areas, and the building and parking envelopes. Okay, the developer has committed to a couple different things. The intensity with a 10.8, 10.8 dwelling units per acre on this site is approximately 60 residential units. There are two external site access points that he's committing to. The impervious surface of this is not in a watershed overlay district, therefore 100% of the site is allowed to be used. Tree coverage in the urban tier is 3%, and the developer has shown that on his plan. The graphic commitments for this piece of property are the location of the tree preservation areas, location of general access points, and building and parking envelopes. Developer has provided one text commitment, and that text commitment is that the right-of-way for Sally Street will be legally closed before the issuance of the first preliminary or final plat, and we have received an application for that. The developer has given us a set of design commitments for this property. These include architectural style, roof lines, and building materials. This project does meet the, it is consistent with the future land use map, which is identified as medium-density residential. The plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted policies. And staff has determined that this requirement, that this request is consistent with comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances.
Thank you. I have six people signed up to speak. I have four people speaking in favor of the item, and two people speaking against the item. The four people speaking in favor will have two and a half minutes each. The two people speaking against will have five minutes each. So the first person speaking in favor of the item is Bill Anderson. Unless the developer would like to go first. Okay, so let's, with Bob Chapman. So, Bill.
Are you sure? It's not gonna hurt you?
Bill, he supposes.
All right. Thank you. I'm Bill Anderson at 113 West Markham. I really came not to speak so much about this particular project, but to give you some general information. I want you to know that these pocket neighborhoods-
Excuse me. Two and a half minutes, please.
Cool, I got a little extra. So, I want you to know that these pocket neighborhoods, I believe, are a wonderful alternative to the four-story apartments that you see going up all over the place. This is a way we can achieve some high-density and some affordable housing parts of it. There's an amazing number of interesting components, which this is why I brought a committee together at the Inner Neighborhood Council about seven months ago. By virtue of Commissioners Reverend Whitley, Commissioner Harris, and Commissioner Miller, you have three past presidents on your board of the Inner Neighborhood Council, and you have the current president in Deidreana Friedman. So I want you to know that we feel that the time taken to explore this new avenue of building in Durham was a worthwhile venture, and Commissioner Miller has served on that committee since its beginning. And the applicant has also attended these meetings, about the last half of them. So, we didn't even know, I had no idea that he was planning a, an operation or project like this. Anyway, I just wanted to come to you so that all of the Commissioners were aware that there was discussion going on, and while I won't be able to help you make your decision tonight, I do expect that that committee will render some information to you that should make these decisions a little easier in the future. Thank you very much.
We have a little slideshow that he's gonna put in, and I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible. Is there a button I push? The forward key, which is that key, number eight. Okay. Thank you. My name is Bob Chapman. I'm a real estate developer. I live at 2525 Lanier Place, Durham, North Carolina. I've been in Durham since 1965. I've done two projects in this area, Trinity Heights, and restoration and re, adaptive reuse of the Gear Street Foster area for restaurants and mixed use, and a project in Chapel Hill called Winmore. I wanted to very quickly show you what we have in mind. Am I causing that? Which is a variety of housing types and housing opportunities. We're talking about row houses between four and eight, 18 to 36 cottages, which would be smaller units, 15, or 18 to 36, single-family houses, our target would be about 27, and then eight to 12 flex units. That totals 70, which is above the 60 you just heard, because we're going to be the first project in Durham to seek the affordable housing density bonus, which would, thank you. Our goal is to have a variety of housing types and housing opportunities. I'm showing you pictures by our town architect, our planner Lou Oliver. These are all real places, that's my son in that picture. These are in Atlanta, but they're places that face public greens. And the public spaces are for interaction with neighbors, for casual encounters, and peaceful relaxation. And the public spaces are revealed along what architect Jeff Shelton calls lines of enticement, that make you curious to follow a path through a gate or around the next All in all, public spaces work when they're brought alive with active rooms, porches, and steps, and the whole process is about, again to quote Jeff, "It's about life, and it's as simple as that. Do you feel alive? Are you more fully yourself? That's it." We want to build a place that you love being in, a place that is about the scale of sociability with pocket neighborhood clusters within a village, it's about supporting children's needs, and it's about community by design. If you visit the things that I've been involved with in this area, you see that we put a lot of focus on architecture, quality detailing, and setting a new standard. And if, these are all designed by Lou, who will be designing this project.
Continue, Bill left about two minutes on the clock.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm gonna try to back this up. I wanted to show you, we wanted to go ahead and commit to the diversity, and I don't know how to back it up, so, there we go. We wanted to have this added to the, to the application, right, as a committed element, that we will have this wide range of types, and the types would be row houses or town houses, cottages, single-family, and flex, which could include and will include rental, and 10 units within the affordable housing density bonus. That's pretty much it. I ran through the slides really quickly, and my excitement is to set a new standard, to create a place where people enjoy, that people enjoy being, living, interacting, and that everybody in Durham ends up being proud of it. I do want to introduce my partner in the project, who is Aaron Lubek, and Aaron is an author who did this book, Green Restorations. He's a co-founder of Trinity Design Build, and I'll be available for questions later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you recognize the speaker, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure this gets on the record before we go any further. This slide that's up right now becomes a committed element. I think the applicant alluded to that fact. We had not seen this previous to today, or even earlier today, we saw it this evening along with you. We cannot independently verify that the calculation of dwelling units is consistent with the density being proposed, but this is committed, so I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record. It's unusual, but it does happen, the 2009 changes to the development plan provisions in the UUO make graphics presented to you commitments.
Thank you. And Commissioners understand. Ms. Shiflett?
Good evening. I've known Bob Chapman for over 10 years. I worked with him on Duke University's infill development project, which anybody you speak to who lives in that area in Trinity Heights is very, very pleased with the improvement in the quality of life, crime going down. Some of the things that he's not mentioned are the Central Park School for Children, and he's also done successful projects in Arkansas and Florida. The land under consideration, if you've ever walked by it, and I have because I delivered newsletters there, has a large gully. It's got broken appliances. It's got broken furniture. It's full of garbage. It's uncomfortable to walk by. I would have to say that safety, the environment, because of that trash, are detriments, and living there 15 years in the North Gate Park neighborhood, I'd love to see something good done with it. Mr. Chapman also is incredibly knowledgeable. He uses people who are experts in land use, in land planning, architects. What he creates are neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods are wonderful to live in. They have cultural events, so neighbors know neighbors, which makes for much safer places to live, and I am really excited about this project, and I hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Lawton. I live at 829 Onslow Street in the Trinity Heights neighborhood. As you've heard, it's a wonderful place to live, Bob. I got to know him 14 years ago when my husband and I purchased a house there in 2000, and the thing that, it's, he hasn't mentioned the word "community" yet, and that is what Trinity Heights has created for me and my neighbors. There are 20 children on my block alone, and there are six families that help one another take care of children, driving them, sharing butter or eggs, or whatever it might be anybody needs. I've had a neighbor take me to rescue a teenager, cousin, who was staying with me. I mean, we just really rely on each other. I didn't know any of these people 14 years ago, and now they've become really good friends of mine, and it's part of the way he's created a development. The other piece is he paid attention in the development process with Duke University- The other piece is he paid attention in the development process with Duke University when the folks that lived there, because I actually used to live on Berkeley Street, and we were concerned about the trees and the green space that existed in the full block that was developed there, and they paid attention, and they created two pocket parks there that we have about six events in every year. Various things, Easter egg hunts, just barbecues, we just had one closing down the street. And it's throughout the whole neighborhood. It's multi-generational. We've got grandparents, we've got children there, and it's this concept of creating community in a dense way in the city, and it does improve the crime. I lived on Berkeley Street earlier in the nineties, and it was a very different neighborhood then. So, I think this can only improve Durham, and I agree with the whole concept, the point that was made about the high rises that are going up. I'd like to see more of this style of development in Durham than the other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Abby Bartel? Five minutes.
I'm Abby Bartel, and I live at 1611 Ruffin Street, which is, this is my backyard. So, I've always known, I've lived there for thirteen years, and I've always known that something would go in there, but I had always had dreams that it could be something better than what I am aware of this project. For one, one of my main concerns right now is its effect on affordable housing in Durham, which is currently a problem in our city. Yes, I did not know that they'd committed to perhaps having some affordable units. Last I knew, they were going to be offering studio apartments for $300,000, which, if you know the North Gate Park neighborhood, $300,000, we don't have houses at that level, houses. I live in a two-bedroom, one-bath house that I bought twelve years ago for $100,000. The value of it has increased as Durham has increased, but if it brought my house value up to $250,000, that's not really affordable for the citizens that currently live in our neighborhood. I also take offense to the idea that the area is crime-ridden. I've never had a crime occur. I can walk into that area, there is nothing back there but trees and deer and any occasional stray dog that the owners are searching for, but I've never had crime happen in my backyard or my front yard. My child, my children are able to play in the street on Ruffin Street with the Latino kids across the street that they attend school with. My other, another concern of mine regarding this property is its effect on the elementary school district. That district is walk zone for Club Boulevard. Walk zone because it is an area that has low-income families. Club Boulevard currently is a perfect mix of thirty, thirty, thirty. Thirty African-American, thirty percent African-Americans, thirty percent Latino kids, thirty percent white kids. Most of those white children come from the magnet lottery, with a few coming in from the walk zone. Additionally, this bringing in seventy units, perhaps, speaking of saying they're family units, those kids would attend Club Boulevard. Club Boulevard is maxed out on space. Absolutely maxed out on space. They don't have room to put in another classroom of children. They are already serving twenty-five, twenty-seven kids in fifth-grade classrooms. They don't have room for any more students in the walk zone, which would tell me that the walk zone would be potentially eliminated, or the magnet eliminated. I'm not sure which. And I did check with the front office, who checked with the district, and the district confirmed through Secretary Reta Walpole that it is indeed walk zone for Club Boulevard. Another concern of mine is the traffic, which I didn't realize that there was another exit. I was really concerned that there'd be a significant amount of traffic increase at Duke Street and Club Boulevard, so I would hope that the other exit onto Duke Street mightily evade that, but I'd still be concerned about the amount of traffic. Duke Street gets really backed up, as does Club Boulevard. I know because I walk that twice a day with my son, going to and from school, so the traffic gets really backed up on Club Boulevard and Duke Street, both. Another concern that I had is the drainage from that site. You've heard that it's a giant ravine, and it indeed is. I've walked back there before. We can only walk fifteen feet from our property line before it drops off steep enough that we're not able to walk back there. So, I would be concerned about the, what, how that would affect the drainage of the surrounding neighborhoods and houses. Lastly, a concern of mine is the easements. When my husband asked about the easements, having just built an outside, an exterior building on our, in our house, we were, we had learned what the easement requirements were for the city, and we had to do a, what was it, a five-foot setback for anything over eight feet, and a ten-foot setback, I believe, for anything higher than that, or fifteen feet? I'm not sure which. But, um, when he spoke to the developer about that, they didn't seem to realize that the houses would have to be set back that far from the property line. So, I just wanted to confirm that those easements are being respected in regards to the property, especially knowing that there is a giant ravine not too far from that property line. So, those are my main concerns, just the general overall effect on the neighborhood, whether ten units would balance out the amount, the decrease in affordable units in North Gate Park that are already in, currently in existence. So, I hope that you'll take those concerns into consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bettina?
My name's Bettina Carpathian. My husband George and I live at 1620 North Duke Street, so this is in, literally in our backyard, too, but on the other side from the previous speaker. And we are also concerned about traffic, for one, because since we've lived there, traffic has just continued to grow, especially with the development of the hotel, and there are regular accidents outside that stretch of Duke Street. And both my neighbors, on one side, a car has gone off the road, actually into the house. The same thing happened with the house on the other side of us. So, traffic is one, and the other thing, again, is with the topography of the land, we are concerned about how close any buildings are going to be to our backyard. It's steep, there's a creek back there, and we're just very concerned about how this is going to encroach. I think both the traffic exits are going to be a problem, because traffic does get bumper-to-bumper on Duke Street and West Club Boulevard. And if the exit is coming down onto Duke Street, almost directly onto the freeway, that seems pretty dangerous, and we have to sit there at rush hour times, sometimes for five or ten minutes, to even back out of our driveway, so I can see this is just going to get worse. So, it's not, I mean, the alternatives were to be for or against. We're not totally against, but we do have these concerns, and I hope they'll be taken into consideration. It's nice to think that this is creating a neighborhood, but there already is a very small neighborhood there, and, you know, I hope it's not going to be built over our concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Are there other members in the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, that you ever close the public hearing and bring it back before the Commissioners? Do we have Commissioners that would like to speak to this item? Okay. Commissioner Winers and Commissioner, that, and that. Okay. Commissioner Miller, Freeman, Bugsby, Gibbs. Okay. Commissioner Winers?
Well, I, I, for, to start off with, let me just say that I'm extremely excited at the prospect of using the, the density bonus, and the, um, recommendations for Mr. Chapman were very impressive, and, and I know that he's, I think this is going to be a great project. I'm not quite sure it's there quite yet, you know? I think it needs some more work. But, I have a couple of questions for, yeah. First, about the elevation, is, well, well, no, let's go with the other one first, because the other question, my, the, it includes some city-owned land, and I assume that the land is still owned by the city, according to the, to the, what's on the, in the materials, you know, what's on, on the website and everything. It, it, the, the city is listed as the owner on the development plan and, or the existing conditions or something. So, I assume that not only does the street have to be closed, but the property has to be acquired from the city. Is that correct?
Commissioner Winers, Pat Young with Plaine Department. To the best of my recollection, Mr. Taylor can help me if I get this wrong, the only, the only thing that exists on the property that pertains to any city ownership interest is the unopened right-of-way of formerly Sally Street, and that the applicant has committed through this proposal to close that. And when it's closed, under the state law pertaining to street closures, the property would, would go to the applicant. So, that really, as long as the street closing is approved by council, there would be no issues, and the, the development could not proceed unless council approves the street closing.
Okay. So, that is equivalent to purchasing the land, closing the street? Or acquiring the land? Acquiring the land?
It has the same outcome, that the, that the property could be used by the applicant.
Okay. And another question I have was the, in the, you mentioned, you talked about these extreme elevation. Is that just a gully in the middle, or is it, and is that gully gonna be filled in? And is it sort of generally sloping towards Ruffin Street? Or, this is probably, yeah, y'all probably forgot that one.
The gully slopes from Club Boulevard down towards I-85, and we have been, um, working with and talking with Ellerby Creek Watershed Association to make this a pilot project for best practices. It is not a jurisdictional stream at this point. During a very heavy rainfall, clearly there is water in it, but I showed a picture from Atlanta where the stream was preserved as part of the green space and, or the public area, and that's our idea, is that we would retain as much of that wonderful topography as a public space and a place for kids to play and take advantage of it. And I think the whole design really takes advantage of the, of the topography.
You, there were no pic, there were, I didn't see any cars in, in the pictures, I don't think. Where are the cars gonna go?
We're gonna do-
And what are these pictures gonna look, what are these things gonna look like from the back?
We're going, um, we're going to have a loop around the, the project, and every, everything is gonna have a front door to the green and a back door to the lane, and the lane is, is a loop lane around. Similar in a, in a way to the alleys we did at Trinity Heights, which have auxiliary dwelling units, granny flats, garage apartments on them. And so, it fits, and it works with the fire code, so.
So, in Trinity Heights, the, the streets are the boundaries, rather than the backyards of the houses on the surrounding streets. What, what's your plan for connecting the existing neighborhood to the, to the new neighborhood?
Well, I believe you and I talked, and you asked to have a fence. Was that right? One of the, one of the neighbors, we want to connect. We want to be, we want the neighbors to feel part of the community to the extent they want to, but if they also want to put up a wood fence, that's fine, or we'll, we'll do it for them.
So, this density is about three, according to my calculations, about three times the density of the streets on either side, because taking into account that you're figuring the, the density on the total area, which includes the, the street, you know? If you take that acre of street out of there, the density is even, is even, and even higher, so.
It's 10.8. By way of comparison, Trinity Heights was eight, so it is higher than Trinity Heights, and the difference is that the lots at Trinity Heights were, on average, fifty feet wide by a hundred and fifty feet deep, or a hundred and thirty feet deep, and some, some, excuse me, a hundred and forty feet, seven thousand square foot lots. In this particular neighborhood, the public area is in common. It's, it's a large green in front of the houses, so there aren't the individual lots. And that's a difference. It's definitely walkable and compact, but we've been and shown pictures of a lot of places that are at the same density, and we think they're delightful. Thank you.
You used up more than my time.
Not, not really. You had, it was one-fourth on the clock when, when Pat spoke, and then when he spoke, you had about fifty minutes left, or fifty seconds left. Commissioner Vice Chair?
Thank you. I have two questions. I'm always very concerned when the current residents are, have, have concerns about new development, and I did hear you allude to the fact that there had been some discussion, and I did also hear from the homeowners, the current homeowners, that they're not totally against this, but, so there's room for some additional discussion, and I'd like to know, will that take place, and will there be an opportunity for some additional input? That's one question. Yes?
Yes, ma'am. We've actually already held two neighborhood meetings. One was at the Club Boulevard School, and the other was at one of the clubhouses, up, the Civitan Clubhouse, and we had an attendance of probably forty to fifty people at each event, and we'll continue to do that. We really want everyone to have an opportunity to see exactly what we have in mind and make suggestions. We've approached the Ellerby Creek Association, as I mentioned, about a model stormwater management program, and we want to be completely transparent. I think it's the best way to do it, and we get good ideas that way.
Thank you. And I do have a second question for you as well. I'm also excited about the use of the density bonus, and, and I do, we've been looking forward for items to come to us. My question has to do with, because there's a mix of row houses and cottages and single-family, then flex rental, will this be a covenant community?
Um-
And, and if so, is your previous, the Trinity Heights, is that also, is that a covenant community?
Um, yes. We probably are going to have to have a homeowners' association, which I guess is-
Right.
A CCNR, covenants, conditions, and restrictions. I personally believe that those are often too prescriptive. I like them to be more flexible and where people don't call a special meeting because somebody's cat was sitting in the window and that kind of thing. And so, I think the ones at Trinity Heights have worked out very well. They haven't been onerous, and, I'm sorry, there's another part of your question.
No, that was the other part of it, whether or not, and whether the previous, you've had some success with other communities, and the question was whether or not these were covenant communities.
Winmore and Chapel Hill, which is on High School, School Road, is, is 214 units. We actually had a very complete architectural review board, about a forty or fifty-page CCNRs document, and that's worked out very well. And by, by the way, Winmore is, is the only community in the Chapel Hill area that had inclusionary low-income housing tax credit apartments, and you cannot tell which ones they are. And we also had the Carboro Small Unit Ordinance that was complied with, and that's the reason we're thinking, we're calling these cottages, but it's affordability by size. Just as by measure of comparison, at Trinity Heights, the one-bedroom efficiencies, we actually sold those for $35,000, and I'm not sure, if I led somebody to think that it was a $300,000 price on that, I must have either done my math wrong or something, but I don't, I don't think that is something we've considered at all, or would be supported by the market.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question or two for staff. Um, right now, do we, is cottage a defined term or, uh, housing type contemplated by the UDO?
Uh, Commissioner Miller, Pat Young with Planning Department. It is not, and flex rental isn't either. So-
Thank you.
Since this is a commitment, we're gonna have to work with the applicant to ensure that those are adequately defined by the time this goes to council.
All right. Or, or, or more descriptive terms contemplated by the UDO are used instead? And I'm sorry, I sound like I'm-
Well, it'll have to be, it'll have to be these precise terms since it's committed in front of this body unless it, unless they wanna go back to Planning Commission.
All right.
But those will have to be further defined in order for us to be able to characterize fully for council what that, those mean. Cause they don't have any definition or meaning to us.
Right. Thanks. And then for Mr. Chapman or for Mr., or, well, for Mr. Chapman.
Yes, sir.
So Bob, you and I've talked about this kind of development and this particular development. Uh, and I like the concept that you showed us in your several slides, uh, and am interested in seeing you implement it here in Durham. But I have to tell you, I don't like your development plan, even though I do like it better now that you've included a unit mix. And I trust that you'll be able to work out something to, to make the staff a little bit happier about it as it moves forward, if it moves forward. Uh, when we, you and I spoke, I was very, very concerned about buffering this development from the potential noise and, uh, uh, view problem proposed by the I-85 right-of-way and wanted to see something in your development plan, some sort of commitment to shield the residents of your development from, um, from that, uh, view and maybe even from the noise if you can do it. Um, have you got, is there something you can put in the development plan to improve that?
Um, we've talked to, um, Dan Jewell and he believes that if we have a problem and we're not actually adjacent to the interstate, we're adjacent to the access lane and then there's a cloverleaf lane and then there's a hill.
Is a ra, you're next to the ramp.
Next to the ramp. And, um, I've been on the property and have not been annoyed by the sound. It may be a problem and Dan believes that we can use a dense evergreen vegetative buffer that he has done, uh, at a soccer complex in Cary, I believe it was, in Raleigh, that was very effective. I think I'd rather do that than build the brick wall. Uh, the brick wall to me, and, and anyway, I, I prefer to have green. And so we will definitely, uh, do what it takes to make sure that no, nobody, uh, doesn't wanna live there because of, of the, of the sound. The biggest issue, um, is big trucks that, um, pull their Jake brakes and, but I'm not hearing that as much as we used to. And then motorcycles that, uh, in packs that scream in the middle of the night. Uh, and both those things, I think we can, we can, uh, focus on and, and through the vegetative, um, dense buffer.
So my question really is, uh, then, would you be willing to put something in your development plan committing to some sort of buffer to at least take care of the, the ugliness of the view, realizing that coping with the sound effectively might, uh, with anything other than a wall might be not possible?
Yes, we'd be, we'd absolutely be happy to do a vegetative, uh, buffer that is designed to be dense enough to have a good effect on sound mitigation also. But we don't know exactly what, how big a problem we have now. And so the question is, we, we talked about this at length yesterday. How do we know what the answer is and we don't wanna commit to the wrong answer in advance, so?
I realize that, but I think you can make a commitment that is broad enough.
Okay.
Uh, within the, the terminology used by the UDO in terms of, of density or, and or opacity of a vegetative buffer that would pass muster. And I would really like to see that in there. I would hate to have you build this and then have your residents afterwards complaining. Um, you saw this as setting a standard. If we're going to set a standard here, and I hope that we will, I hope we set a high one so that the people who come later will say, "This is an idea we like," or not, though this, though, that's the one where nobody wanted to buy it because it was slam up against the interstate. Um, so that's what I'm looking for.
Can I, can I refer this to Dan?
Absolutely.
He's the landscape architect.
Good conversation, uh, Dan Jewell with Culture Jewell Tams. Good conversation and, uh, and, and, and yes, I think, I think we can craft a, uh, an evergreen buffer density that's somewhat higher than the prescriptive ones and the, if you're familiar with the, uh, the Durham ordinance, it has different prescriptions of, of, of opacity. Uh, and the one that, uh, Bob referred to that we, we did, uh, about ten years ago, you drive by there now, you can't see what's going on on the other side, you can't hear what's going on the other side. But I, uh, we could work with staff and come up with a, a total evergreen buffer. It would be largely evergreen trees and wax myrtles and things like that, maybe even some birmingham. We could commit to that cause certainly we're gonna be moving a little bit dirt around. Uh, but, uh, we can commit to something that's, that's of a higher opacity than even required by the, the Durham, uh, current, required by the, by the UDO. And we're, we're happy to commit to that. So maybe that would be the language to commit to a tight evergreen buffer that is in excess of the current UDO requirements for a, a landscape buffer.
All right. Thank you. And then one last question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Uh, for Mr. Chapman. Uh, the most attractive thing about this type of development, and you showed it in your several slides to us, was this notion of common green space. Rather than giving every house a front yard and a backyard, uh, we might move the houses a little bit closer, but give them, uh, shared, one or two shared common areas. And we don't have a commitment to that, even though I know in your heart that's what you want to build. Uh, what I'd like to do is if we're going to allow sixty or even seventy units in so small a space in an air, in a, and in this neighborhood, I would like to see some sort of commitment for that common green space. And I was wondering if you could construct that, uh, a committed element for that, uh, in this development plan? That would still give you the flexibility that you need in order to, to, to build the development. I'm not looking for a footprint or anything like that.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Dan to answer that, cause he's got-
Certainly.
More experience than I do. Bob, I mean, I'd like my answer, but I'll give you an answer. Uh, yes, the concept of the plan all along is, 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 uh, Bob brought to us over, over a year ago. And I, I, I don't think it'd be a stretch to commit to say that the, um, the, the, the houses, the majority of the houses, the majority of the units, not all of them, because there'll be some periphery corners and we would like to do some, a few things out of Club Boulevard to set a, an edge and a precedent and make it a comfortable thing to walk by. But I think we could commit to a, a majority of the houses to, uh, to be, uh, oriented around a common green space of some kind.
Would you be willing to craft some sort of committed element though for this development plan going forward that would describe that, uh, with sufficient flexibility though for you to, uh, accomplish your, your development?
Uh, yes. I mean, uh, I guess, is there a suggestion for something beyond what I've stated, that a majority of the units, units would be oriented around-
No, no, I like what you stated. I was just wondering, are you willing to make it a commitment to develop?
Yes, yes. Thank you. I'm dim tonight. Up late in Chapel Hill last night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pat?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, um, as you're probably aware, we, we've talked about this recently, um, the planning director has a, uh, guidelines that he's asked us to adhere to strictly as possible, which is not to accept commitments or not recommend acceptance of commitments that we have not reviewed or vetted in any way, shape or form, which is the case with everything so far tonight. Um, what's before you here is problematic because it lacks definition, but we're willing to accept it. I would need the applicant to restate anything that was just committed there previously in a way that we can ensure that we have explicit language and try to make a determination about whether it's something we can accept or whether we would request a, a continuance of this item to, to review these. Unless you all wanna stipulate that these are things that are made subsequently to council, which then they're, they wouldn't be binding with your action. That, that's at your discretion. Um, but we would need one of those things to happen. As a point of information, because this is, uh, in the urban tier, it's adjacent to residential, it's residential to residential, there's no UDO required, but, project boundary buffer. So again, the, the buffer, I, I would need to be sure I understand the precise location and the, the standard. Above ordinance minimum means, uh, one tree, ju, legally. Uh, and then I didn't even hear the last one, so, um, help me, I guess I'm just addressed primarily at the applicant, but you all have the discretion to decide how you wanna handle this.
Dan, you have language.
To the, um, the one about the buffer, uh, it, Mr. Young, would it be, uh, appropriate to say that along the northern Interstate eighty-five right-of-way frontage of the property, we will install a continuous, tight, evergreen screen consisting of a combination of evergreen trees and shrubs that would achieve a ninety percent opacity, uh, within ten years of the time of planting? It does take time for, for plants to grow up. And I think we can achieve that. So is that, is that an appropriate language for a committed element? And of course, you'll have to rely on a landscape architect to tell you how fast those trees will grow, but I know you have a few on your staff.
And will the trees grow by themselves or will they need some maintenance?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Commissioner.
I'm not willing to recommend that that be accepted without further review by staff. You, you all have the, you all have the discretion to accept it, but it's not something, I, I don't know if that's, uh, and, Mr. Jewell, I respect greatly, um, as a, as a landscape architect, but I have no idea about what the word tight means. I don't know what the viability of trees at that opacity are. Um, there's just a, a level of due diligence that seems warranted before we recommend you accept it. You can still accept it, uh, or you can ask that this be handled with, uh, with staff prior to council's consideration. Again, that's at your discretion.
Commissioner Miller?
But were we to, uh, ask for a sixty-day delay, you would have time to vet these, proposed committed elements to your satisfaction?
We will review the committed elements that are, that are sent to us by the applicant. If, if there's no action taken, we're gonna rely on the applicant to send those to us. Um, we, we will certainly review those and provide feedback to the applicant pursuant to the departmental standards, which, which again is only several days in advance of, of each hearing.
If I could, in lieu of a deferral, I would like to offer some alternate language, which perhaps is more in keeping with, um, defensibility of, of the UDO. Um, you're, you're right, tight is a subjective term. Um, that we will provide a evergreen buffer that has twenty-five percent more plant material than the most intense buffer shown in the UDO.
He didn't say minimum standards, he just said the most intense.
I think that's a fairly, fairly prescriptive, uh-
I don't know if that's practical. If you all wanna accept it, you can accept it. But we, we're not gonna, we, it's not been reviewed or vetted by staff.
Let me just ask commissioners, anyone have a problem with the developer working with staff between now and the time they present it to city council to work out the committed elements? Okay. The second, uh, the second one was about the, uh, common area.
Shared.
Shared common area.
The shared common area. So let me give that one a better, a better description as well, although this is something that's not in the UDO at all, so we're, we're, we're making this out of old cloth and I expect we'll get the same concerns over staff. And that is that a majority of the single-family units will be oriented in a looped configuration around a common green space. Now, there's a lot of subjectivity to looped, to common green space, that sort of thing. But perhaps in the same spirit, we could, we could work with staff on a, uh, on a language that is satisfactory to them as being defensible and enforceable. I think that's what it comes down to.
Okay. Do we have any commissioners that would have any objections to the developer and staff working together come up with language for the second committed element that he recommended?
I just wanna say, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the developer's openness and willingness to include these and I'm certainly satisfied. And I believe that they will come up with the best language that they can between now and the time this goes to the council.
Commissioner Freeman?
I first wanted to, um, mention that I felt like I should have. Apologize for being late this evening. I, um, was running late from work. But, um, I kinda have to eat my words in that I didn't think that the density bonus would be used and I'm excited that it is at this point. And I'm okay with that. It's easy to support this development and that it's working towards, um, a common, uh, a community by design and that, including a density bonus. I really wanted to ask staff how you would even address the concerns of the homeowner around school walkability? Like, that kind of threw me, so I didn't know if there was something that we could say or do that would-
Uh, Commissioner Freeman, Pat Young with Planning Department. Uh, the analysis we provided you in your staff report is what we were asked to do some ten years ago with the comprehensive plan, which is look at the, uh, capacity of the school relative to the entire Durham public school system. And that's what we provided and what the report shows is that there is capacity. Uh, the school system was very adamant, uh, at the time we developed that policy that we not look at it on a school-by-school basis because they have obviously flexibility to, um, as one of the opponents spoke to, to make administrative changes about how they assign, do school assignments. So all we could really say is that it, it meets our policy regarding overall capacity to the, to the system. And we don't have any additional information about Magnus' status or change, or, we don't have any information in that regard.
And I would offer that to the resident that brought that concern. I would be willing to work with you on any, um, school board, you know, like, making sure that your walk, walk zone was not changed or anything. I mean, I can understand that concern, that's what I'm getting at, so, just wanna make sure that you know that. And then also for the other resident's concern about, I, I couldn't quite understand if you were saying there was a drop-off behind your house?
Lisa, if you're gonna talk, please go to the, uh, microphone. There is a, this is being televised, so the public need to be able to hear what you're saying.
Yeah, our house, we're sixteen-twenty North Duke Street and our backyard goes down to the bottom of the ravine as it's been described.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Busby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, Mr. Chapman and your team, I, I commend you as well for moving forward with, with using the affordable housing bonus. I think that's, uh, very exciting for Durham. I had, first a question for staff. I was confused when I looked at the, the school impact information and, and I agree with Commissioner Hyman, whenever there are neighborhood concerns raised, I, I wanna understand those. In the staff report on page ten, it says that, uh, this development would serve the Glenn Elementary School? And, and it is within the walk zone for Club Boulevard. So I, number one, I just wanted to make sure we had clarity around that specific point. And then I was also interested in getting a sense of, would there be additional impacts to the, to the elementary school by going from sixty units to seventy units?
Commissioner Busby, Pat Young with the Planning Department. Um, as you're probably aware, the walk zone is, is kind of a, an option, a guaranteed option where that walk zone exists. I believe what's represented here, Green, Brogdon and Riverside are the base assignment districts, to the best of my knowledge. So that's why that was, and could you repeat your second question?
And just then wondering about, uh, any, I, this is, this is speculative, but this was based on sixty units, correct? And what might the change be moving to seventy units?
We, we would have to evaluate that. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is the first we heard of the potential utilization of the affordable housing density bonus that would change, uh, again, both the assumptions and the, and the total number of units. So we would have to calculate that. I just don't have those at the hand, at the ready. It would, to be, in all fairness, the applicant, it would be pretty modest, an additional ten units, you know, probably a fraction or, uh, one student per, per level.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then I did have a question for Mr. Chapman as well. I know you talked about the design of the traffic within the development site itself. Could you talk about the, the- Could you talk about the development or the traffic when the development meets Club Boulevard? And I ask because I know that intersection can get quite busy. I'm having a hard time imagining anyone being able to make a left turn out of that development onto Club and heading east during rush hour?
There is a city street across... There is an intersection where our entry street is... What is the name of the street? Woodland Street is directly across the street, and those individuals do make a left turn to Club. Clearly, we're going to design it so that the traffic and transportation department in Durham is happy, and we'll have to do what they recommend. Did I answer your question? We have not gotten that far yet.
Right, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gibbs.
Just a couple of comments. The affordable units notwithstanding, it's good to see that coming, and I guess this sort of goes along with my comments earlier about my vote last meeting. This is one of the ways that we can accomplish affordable housing, and that is by the cooperation and the contributing this without prodding from anybody, and I appreciate that. I have been waiting for this kind of design. It's one way to achieve, and I was talking about the common green space. It's one way to achieve density and without the shotgun design and have green space. I really liked your presentation on some prior developments, and I think this concept is something... It's one of my favorite design concepts, and it can be applied not only in the city but in the county, because I think in the future, we are going to have more and more compact designs, compact communities. I may be misusing some of the terms that I'll say, but I don't know another term for it right now. But having said all of that, I do have concerns with what the residents have brought up, and we've been there before, or at least I have, in a couple of developments. I've contacted the school system. Does the school system ever weigh in on this, like this? Or at some point in the process, will they weigh in about what... Well, you never know how many kids are going to be living there, for one thing, but how it's going to possibly impact Club Boulevard. And I can understand the concern of being within walking distance of Club Boulevard and being, having to be buzzed towards Glenn School. Anyway, that and the seemingly excessive slope, I still don't know how that's going to be handled, and that's something I guess could be done as part of carrying this forward for the city council, as you were suggesting earlier, Mr. Chairman. But those are my concerns, and thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. Impervious surface area, a hundred percent. This is in the Elleby Creek watershed, which is a tributary to the Upper Neuse River Basin. Is that an accurate statement?
Mr. Chair, Pat Young with Planning Department. What I believe to be the case is that this part of the community is not within a protected water supply watershed, which is the regulation that puts limitations on maximum impervious surface. There still, of course, would be requirements to treat stormwater for quality and quantity, but there's not an explicit limitation on impervious surface, so the applicant is within their rights for requesting up to a hundred percent impervious.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, the chair will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion.
You may.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to case Z fifteen zero 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 two zero, the Rose Walk development proposed by these developers, I move that the Durham Planning Commission send this forward to the Durham City Council with a favorable recommendation, provided that the development plan contain committed elements satisfactory to the staff that include the chart diversity of housing opportunities that the developers presented to us today, and a committed element concerning noise and view mitigation along the development's boundary with ID five, similar to the commitments made by the land use planner for the developer, and that the last committed element that we would add would be that the development include shared common green space with access to the percentage of units described by the developer's land planner, and that... At any rate, that's the end of my motion, thank you.
The motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Freeman. We will hear a roll call as we vote.
Mr. Busby. Mr. Gosh.
In favor.
Mr. Gibbs. Ms. Hyman.
Aye.
Ms. Freeman. Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mr. Whitley.
Aye.
Ms. Wenders.
Aye.
Eleven to zero carries.
All right, so the motion passes.
Thank you very, very much.
The chair has been asked, and we'll grant a five-minute recess. If we can come back to order, please. Who are you? Get the commissioners back.
Is he there?
Have you loosened the building now?
No, no. Do we have eight of us here? Yeah. Four, eight. Got seven, right?
Yeah, well...
I know, she went to get a drink of water, he probably, he went to the bathroom.
It's a long walk to the bathroom.
No, it's right there.
It's not locked, right?
No, it's not locked. I'm waiting for one more commissioner to get back. Now, I need one more for us to have eight. Now, we're going to be waiting on two more when you leave. All right, we have eight. So we're going to reconvene our meeting and open the public hearing for TC one five quadruple zero one omnibus UDO amendments.
Good evening, I'm Scott Whiteman from the Planning Department, attempting to play the role of Michael Stock this evening.
Attempt?
Attempt. I admit it's solely an attempt. This is case TC fifteen oh one, omnibus changes nine. This is, what's a usually annual collection of minor changes to the UDO. In this particular batch, we have five general categories of changes. One is to change the name of the former division of water quality with the state. The second is to revise the procedures for the Historic Preservation Commission and the initiation of historic districts. Third is necessary corrections and clarifications to provisions of the UDO. Fourth are amendments reflecting minor changes in policy. And fifth are changes indicated by the elected officials during the approval of the WCF text amendment. As you're aware, we provided you this last month so that we could give you about thirty days to peruse all forty-nine pages, so I hope you've had a chance to do that, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I have no one signed up to speak. Are there any members in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, I've closed the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do I have commissioners wishing to speak? Do I have commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of comments on the... As we go work through this, do you want me to just deal with each of my comments, or do you want me to... Do you want to kind of go item by item?
No, we'll deal with your comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And these are questions for staff. My first concern is the one I raised briefly during our meeting last time, and this has to do with the proposed change to initiating historic district. This is contained on page four of the attachment A. So under the existing ordinance, there are two ways that a historic district can be initiated. It can be initiated by petition of the owners of twenty-five percent of the proposed district, or it can be initiated on the motion of the appropriate elected body, the city council or the Board of County Commissioners. Is that not correct? And what we're proposing then to do is to say that when we have a petition initiated district, that we're going to send that to the appropriate governing body to decide whether or not to move forward with the district initiation. And I have a problem with that. Right now, and this is the problem, I don't think it's... I would rather just do away with petition-initiated districts, and this is why. I mean, today, any citizen can go to the city council or the Board of County Commissioners and ask them to exercise their discretionary authority anywhere, and if any one person can go and ask for the city council to start a historic district, why would we have a provision in the code that said it would take a petition of the owners of twenty-five percent of the property if one person can do it and has a constitutional right to make that request? I think it would be better to do away with that whole thing, and I understand why the staff doesn't like it. It's legal today because it compels the city to act. The city has to do certain things. You have to prepare a preservation plan before you get to the elected body to decide whether or not to create the district, and this, of course, allows citizens to essentially orient staff resources in a way that doesn't involve elected body review, and it's probably unsatisfactory for that reason. There's been some friction about that with regard to the Golden Belt application, and I've made kind of a stink about that, but I also understand the issue. And as we move forward then, what I recommend is that we do away with that petition-initiated way of starting a historic district. I wonder why we don't do what some other communities do, and makes sense, a historic district is a zoning overlay, is just make it like any other zoning and say that an applicant who jumps through the necessary hoops can bring forward a request to create historic district. And what I have in mind is, you know, we're simplifying the preservation plan by moving a lot of its contents into a set body of review criteria. It seems to me that we're creating a situation where an applicant might be able to create a whole application for a district including a proposed preservation plan. I mean, normally, the contents of those plans are prepared by private consultants, a large body of the data at any rate, and it wouldn't be that big a deal to add the other things as long as we had a clear list of what was minimally required in a preservation plan. We could do that, or we could just make them all city-initiated and let the people who want the district actually just appear in front of council and say, start this, this is what we have in mind, and then the council can decide to direct staff, we like this idea, go work on it, because that's essentially what we're proposing here. Now, I don't want to offer any disrespect to the Historic Preservation Commission and would not oppose an intermediate step where any citizen proposal like that go to the Historic Preservation Commission to get their advice to the elected body, and I think that's what you've got built into this, too. I guess what I'm objecting to is the, what I think is, is the kind of pretended requirement of this twenty-five percent petition when really, under the law, it's not required today. It's legal only because it compels, and once we take the compulsion away, then we might as well wipe the whole thing clean. So that's my comment on that. Mr. Chairman, I have a lot of comments. Do you want to ask? I don't want to monopolize them. Do you wanna ask, I don't wanna monopolize the microphone, though, we can go bit by bit.
Okay. Do you want to respond?
Sarah Young with the Planning Department, we'll certainly take those comments back and discuss them internally and see if there's an alternate approach that could be proposed. We were trying to minimize the amount of changes to the section while still, as you said, ensure that there is some consideration of resource allocation, the availability to do such a massive project, which has been what's been holding us up. So, that was the reason behind, but we're happy to take your comments and take another look.
I just don't see a reason not to eliminate the witch's broomstick quality of the twenty-five percent petition when it's really not required.
Okay, Commissioner Frame?
I'm, I'm coming back. So, I just had a, a specific question on the historic districts, since, since that's where we're starting. Are there any others outside of Golden Belt?
Sarah Young again with the Planning Department, yes, there is a pending expansion of the Holloway Street local historic district, came in at the same time Golden Belt did.
Yeah, okay. And then also, um, I just wanna make sure that they're, that these, I think that, that's separate, the, we're not in the compact. Are we coming back to the compact neighborhood?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the compact neighborhood, yeah. Okay. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Whitely?
Yes, I, I'm a little confused. How did the petition get in, um, the twenty-five percent, where did that come from?
To be honest, I do not know for certain, that is a provision that has been in the ordinance as long as I've been here, which has been fifteen years. So, I assume that it was drafted originally, um, when that was put into the ordinance, when the program started over twenty-five years ago, but I don't know for certain.
Now, do you know when, um, it became palatable not to have the twenty-five percent and go straight to council?
I don't know that I can address that question, I don't know that it necessarily is palatable, that is a suggestion that was brought before us tonight. What this text amendment was proposing to do was to add a middle step where when we get a petition, we take it first to city council to kind of get their blessing and get them to direct and be able to address any issues of resource allocation before we kind of put it on the docket and try and spend time and rearrange priorities to try and deal with these massive projects. So, the proposal did not eliminate the petition requirement, it added an extra kind of prioritization step.
Yeah, that's the part I like. You know, um, I think if some, someone or a group of someones want to change my neighborhood, then I think they ought to have, um, it should be knowledge, uh, knowledge by some percentage of people living there. And broader, the knowledge of it seems to me gives weight to whether it should be approved or disapproved. One person going to change my neighborhood, um, doesn't strike me as being democ, that's not how democracy supposed to work. You know, um, we certainly don't elect people by one person saying, um, approve this. You know, it's, it's done by a majority. And, um, and I think keeping democracy in the works, um, makes it palatable for everybody. The more people that are informed, the better the decision. So, my comment to this is, how do we get this petition to have merit? If it can be, if someone can go, um, without it? And does that mean we need to write something into the text that would eliminate the ability of one person going to, um, usurp, usurp the, the power of a whole neighborhood?
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on. You, you through?
Through, thank you.
We're not gonna go back and forth on an issue, if you got a comment, you can make a comment, but we're not gonna have you responding to each other's comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, why not?
Because I'm not gonna allow it, we'll be here all night if I allow that. So, would the staff like to respond to what Commissioner Whitely said?
Sure, I think the only thing that I said earlier is that we would be willing to explore another alternative. Again, that has not been vetted, we haven't had a chance to look at that. Our proposal was to keep it, but to add that extra step to help deal with resource allocation issues. To be honest, we as staff even looked at increasing the percentage, you know, to make it so that potentially, you know, you had more buy-in from the community that it was going to affect. We did not even land there, but just for your knowledge, that is some, one of the options that we looked at, so.
Thank you.
We are happy to take your comments and go back and consider them.
Okay, thank you. Just, just in response to that, I just had a question regarding, so the local historic districts, are they reviewed outside of national historic districts? Or they, do they normally have to fall under a national, or it's just?
So, national and local can be completely separate, they can overlap, they actually don't have anything to do with one another. Uh, we do have several places where they overlap, we have local districts in the same roughly areas where we have national register, uh, but they're not co-dependent in any way.
And then just to respond to the twenty-five percent, um, I know we submitted from the Golden Belt neighborhood about a hundred percent, or maybe eighty-five percent, so I don't think that a percentage is an issue, but it is an issue that, um, with the twenty-five percent, we still haven't been able to have resource and allocation through the petition process for there to be movement on an approved local historic district. So, I'm not sure that this is addressed, and I think that might be where Mr. Miller or Commissioner Miller is coming from in that, I don't think that addresses the issue. So, I hear Commissioner Whitely, but I wanna make sure that we are getting to that point of making sure that, that the resources are allocated and that planning staff has enough to move forward with this.
Okay, you had another point to make. I mean, but you had another issue.
Yes, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can direct everybody's attention to, um, page seven. And this is three point one six point four E1. It says a legal meets and bounds description, it seems to me a meets and bounds description might be, I mean, that's a, that's one legal description that would be okay, but what if it was just a, like a plat reference, that's also adequate to convey. In a deed, you don't have to have a meets and bounds description. Seems to me that, that, that requires somebody to go out and survey when you might have the description already prepared in a deed.
Yeah, the reason why we're adding this is because we've had it, issues where a historic landmark was designated based on the property and then recombinations have happened. And we have no, once that new plat is recorded, we do. Because there's a tax credit associated with it, we need an exact location.
Well, right, but you can get an exact location with a, I mean, today, the, the majority of residential properties are sold without a meets and bounds description. There's a description that says this is lot twelve, block six, in the such-and-such plat filed a certain date. That's all that's ever going, that's a legal description, it just seems to me meets and bounds is, is too restrictive under current conveyancing laws and rules. It's, uh, just a legal description would be enough, as long as, as it's, as long as it's a legal description sufficient to convey the property, it seems to me meets and bounds is too limited.
That, that is a good point, we'll, we'll look into that. Perhaps just referencing a legal description which is not currently required is, uh, would be sufficient.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask people to, um, go also on page seven and part three at the bottom. Concerning incorporating documents by reference into the ordinance. Under the laws I understand it, uh, the city can indoor, incorporate into its ordinances a, a document like a manual or something else, uh, but it cannot incorporate future changes. So, if you incorporate a manual into the, or a provision from another document into your ordinances, it's the version that it prevails at the time of the incorporation, the time that the ordinance adopting, uh, the incorporation goes into effect. If the body that creates the manual, like the certified board of such-and-such, changes the ma, manual two years later, those changes don't become part of the ordinance under North Carolina law, you have to go back and re-adopt. Now, the North Carolina General Assembly has in certain cases by statute, given certain agencies the authority to adopt future changes, but without an express statute granting, uh, the city the ability to adopt future changes by reference, uh, I don't think we can do it. Now, I also admit that I have not searched chapter one sixty A or chapter one fifty-three A to find out whether or not such an ordinance, I mean, such a statute exists, if it does, then I withdraw my objection. I'm concerned here that what it does, I mean, the way the laws that are written, the courts have held that, uh, without express authority, it's a violation of due process because it delegates into a body that's not answerable to the people the ability to change the law that governs the lives of the people. So, I would ask that we look at that before we move forward, I know it's, it's convenient, but I don't think it's lawful. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, ask everyone to go to page ten. And this is the neighborhood meeting notice, and I see here that what we propose to do is, if, if I understand it under the current ordinance, when a neighborhood meeting is required for certain developments, that neighbors within a thousand feet get notice and invited to that meeting. We're proposing to reduce that notice radius to six hundred feet in certain cases. And am I guessing right, and that's because we want this notice radius to correspond to the notice radius for, that would exist for a zone change? So that you don't have a group of people that might be invited for the neighborhood meeting and not invited to the pla, to the hearing in front of the planning commission?
Yeah, that's exactly right, this is intended so that the neighborhood meeting notice requirements match exactly the legal notification requirements for the type of case.
And if, and while we're talking about these neighborhood meetings, a lot of us in the last month or so, I mean, year or so, have, have learned about rezonings from emails submitted to us by citizens who have attended one of these meetings. Sometimes I feel like I'm caught short when they ask questions or, or want us to respond in some way when it's the first notice that I've had of any neighborhood meeting. I'm not suggesting that we get any kind of advance notice or anything like that, but I, I listen to what the citizens say happens in these meetings, and I wonder whether or not, uh, we in our ordinance have told people what we expect to happen in these meetings. Some of them seem to be very good and others seem to be, uh, filled with all kinds of crazy things, and it seems to, they seem to be the source of a lot of public dissatisfaction. At some point in time, I would like for us to look at, at the neighborhood meetings and whether or not we're getting out of them everything that we hoped we would when we created them back in two thousand and six. I'm not against them, I'm just, I think it's maybe, we, we now have enough experience under our belt to evaluate whether or not the program we have is the best one we could have. And, Mr. Chairman, if you could, we can go to, um, three point two point five A1. I didn't write down what page that's on.
Notification?
Yes, page, this is on page ten. Do I understand this correctly, that this is just putting in a table information that's currently in the, in the ordinance and that this table isn't creating any new requirements with the exception of the major and minors COAs?
That is correct, and it's also the, the Board of Adjustment statute that was approved, uh, a few years ago by the General Assembly explicitly added a posting requirement for appeals, so we're, we're changing us to match that.
And what we're, what we're doing is, is we're taking away the distinction between major and minor, uh, COAs for notice purposes and treating them identically.
That's correct.
Alright, thank you very much. In five point three point three C.
Okay, you had a comment on, on that one.
No, the, um, the neighborhood meeting, mm, I think that's a good idea, Tom. And I think we probably ought to have some kind of subcommittee to work on that. I, I would hate to just drop it, just for that to just come and, and get lost somewhere.
Commissioner Whitely, we're not dropping it. Staff is gonna take all of these combat, comments and massage them, talk about them, and bring them back to us.
And, and this, in, in any kind of review and reconsideration of, of the neighborhood meeting proposal has to find its place in the current work plan, and I don't wanna jump ahead or anything like that, I don't, I'm not considering it a crisis, I just, we are seeing, I am seeing as a planning commission member, uh, how they're working. But I have to admit, I've only attended one myself, uh, otherwise I always find out about them after they've happened. So, I, I'm, I'm, I personally do not feel like I'm in a position to say, okay, this is what needs to be done. But I do think that's some, that we need to, we need to look at what's happening, uh, as a staff and put it in the work plan at some point. But I don't think we're, I don't think we will be allowed to forget it 'cause I think that the citizens will keep it ever in, ever in our minds. On page seventeen, um, there is a provision that says setbacks allowed per section six point nine residential development in, uh, non, excuse me, non-residential development in residential districts. And then when I go to six point nine, we don't actually use the term setbacks, we use, there's a table there and we talk about street yards and, and side yards and those kinds of things, we talk about yards but not setbacks, do we need to reconcile the, the language that we use? Or have I completely misunderstood what's being accomplished?
Yeah, that, that's a good point, we are kind of conflating two similar terms, so, yeah, we'll definitely clarify that.
Thank you. And then on eighteen, on page eighteen, accessory structures, why are we taking out the minimum four hundred square feet in area provision? It seems to me, four hundred square feet is an area of twenty feet by twenty feet, so it is about, that area right in front of us between the dais and the front row of chairs is about six hundred square feet, and we're talking about allowing a dwelling unit to be smaller than two-thirds of that space, twenty feet is seven steps.
We, we propose removing that because it's redundant with the building code, which.
Okay, it's because of the building code or, and, uh, do, is there a similar provision in the housing code? 'Cause that was one of my questions, I can remember back when I was on the Housing Appeals Board, there was a minimum, so it's just not necessary to have it there, it doesn't change the requirement. Thank you, I'm satisfied. And, Mr. Chairman, at any time, if another member of the commission has something they wanna talk about, they should jump in.
We'll be here all night anyway.
I warned you. So, on page twenty-two, six point three point three D. Can you explain to me what this change actually does?
So, we run into this conflicting provision where an existing platted lot, say in a RS eight district, meets all the legal requirements for a single-family residence, but it does not meet the density requirements that are shown in the table.
And, so, give me an example.
Actually, so a better example would be, a, in an RU five-two district, a, we have minimum lot sizes for duplexes in section, in article seven. However, if you have a lot that meets that minimum lot size for duplex, it doesn't meet the density requirements in here, in this table, 'cause.
In what way, get, like I said, give me an example, I've got a lot that, that's an RU five-two lot, and.
And so, in, in the urban tier, that's, you need seven thousand square feet in order to build a duplex.
Right.
But the density requirement would actually require a lot of, I can't remember the exact number, but it's well over ten, seven thousand square feet.
Something bigger.
Something bigger. So, we're having, we have this conflicting provision where we have minimum lot size for a housing type, but then a density limit here, and our, we, the intent was that when you're doing.
So, when you say density requirements, you're talking about a density limit.
Yes, and so, the intent of this is for. And so, the intent of this is for new development, which would require a subdivision approval or a site plan approval. So this is, clarifies that if it's an existing platted lot, then the density limits do not apply. It would just be the lot size requirement in Article seven. But if you need to do a preliminary plat or a site plan, then you would have to meet the density requirements as well as the lot size requirements.
Thank you. I could not, just reading this, figure out what we were talking about. I apologize. On page twenty-four, there's a height table. It's a brand-new table. Does this table create new provisions or does it take old provisions and just make a table out of them?
Yeah, it just reorganizes things because, uh, it was hard to administer the way it was before. So there's no new requirements.
It's just putting it in a table for, it's ease of use.
Yes.
Thank you. On page thirty-eight, see how many pages I skipped that time? I was probably getting tired. So what is the practical effect of the proposed change three point four, point eleven, A, B, uh, A and B, this, uh, sending things to the, um, JCCPC? If somebody proposes a text amendment to the comprehensive plan, it's my understanding that these are all going, during the course of the year, we're going to gather these together and have one big meeting where we talk about them?
Yeah, so this was an issue that we had never actually had to deal with until the, uh, the recent, uh, research Triangle Park amendments. And it, uh, definitely highlighted the issue that the future land use map is very property-specific and is very similar to zoning map change, so the procedures for that seem relatively sufficient. However, if you change a broad policy that's intended to affect the whole county, there should be a higher level of input and scrutiny to that. And so, th- this is intended to provide that higher level of input and scrutiny.
Do we get a lot of these proposed text changes that come from, from the private community?
We've, since the comp plan was adopted in two thousand and five, we've gotten one...
So the, the likelihood that such a provision is going to cause some outcry in the development community is small, in our experience?
And, but, and hopefully, honestly, this will make that even less likely to happen.
And so, what, their review criteria, and then it talks about, uh, shall be considered for appropriateness and priority. What does that mean? Can the, does this mean that the JCCPC becomes some sort of planning agency that can deny one of these things being considered by the elec- the elected board, the city or the county? I've just not, I don't know what considered for appropriateness. If the JCCPC says, we don't think this is appropriate, is the application for that change over? Or does it go on to the city council with the JCCP's negative recommendation?
We intended that to be like, the text amendments are currently treated where they're brought to the JCCPC before they're brought forward through the reg- regular process. And the JCCPC can bless it, send it forward. But of course, if someone pays their fee and...
But they can't kill it?
Can't kill it.
All right. On page forty-eight. Concerning, uh, section fourteen, point two, point six. The single-family use exemption, again, help me understand what this means with an exam- with a real-life example or one that's plausible from your own invention?
So we actually have quite a few subdivisions, um, that were developed under the zoning ordinance, which allowed single-family residential in a lot of our non-residential districts, like the OI district and the CG district, particularly the OI district, which the UDO does not. Um, and in those rather large subdivisions, they're all now technically non-conforming structures. And so, if you want to put in a shed or something like that, then you're, uh, you're limited by the, the non-conforming provisions.
So if I owned a lot that was, uh, in a single-family subdivision that was created under the old ordinance in an OI, uh, one or whatever it was, we used to have two OI, uh, and I hadn't built on it but now wanted to, what would I have to do today?
If you hadn't built on it, you would have to meet all current requirements. But if you had a single-family house in place by January first, two thousand and six, and you'd be granted all the rights that a conforming, single-family structure would have.
Right, but if I hadn't built, how would I, I probably wouldn't be able to build, would I? I would have to...
You might have to build a very teeny office.
Oh, yeah, okay. Interesting, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Whitely.
I guess my question, um, with this was sidewalks. And when reading this, I was looking for where to, um...
Let us know where you are.
Um, forty-seven and forty-eight. Um, we have a problem where we don't prioritize sidewalks, um, where they're needed the most. Um, case in point, we have children walking in the street. They get off school buses. There's no sidewalk, you know? Um, and seem to me that should have a priority. And where would that fall if you're going to do language change here?
So Commissioner Whitely, th- these provisions only apply for what's required for new development? So for example, if you're building a new commercial building, you would be required to build sidewalk on the frontage of your property, which is a, this is a land use regulation aspect of sidewalks. I think what you're talking about is the city construction of sidewalks on places that were, it was built before sidewalks were required, which is a, a funding issue, which is well above my pay grade.
Commissioner Freeman?
Just in reference to the sidewalks while we're on it, um, what's the current, um, complete street sidewalk size? I know it's not our...
It's, in, most tiers, not the compact or downtown, it's five feet, which is the ADA requirement.
Oh, and then, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, that was all I had under this section.
Any, uh, then...
I'm disappointed, Commissioner Miller. I said, "I'm disappointed."
Commissioner Gibbs?
Uh, my question has to do with, uh, and I, since I just ran across this handicapped accessible parking, that has to do with transportation. I know we have, there is a policy, I think there's a policy for shelters being provided at all bus stops and that they'd be handicapped accessible and that sort of thing. Is that something that's, that's been included in, in some way in this UDO somewhere, somehow, other than just by reference to the ADA? And I'm sorry, I haven't looked into it any deeper than...
So any new construction, whether it's a bus shelter or a building, would have to meet all ADA requirements?
Right.
And, um, the ordinance doesn't generally require bus shelters at all bus stops. We do in certain cases where we believe there's a rational nexus for that. And I can't remember what page it's on, but we do clarify the requirements for that in the mixed-use zoning district in, in these changes.
Yeah, and I, I spoke to some of the staff several years ago, uh, about this particular issue. It's something that has come up many times, uh, from, uh, people that live, the elderly people that live in certain, certain buildings in different parts of the city, that is served by, uh, by bus route. And it's something that I, I wish it somehow could be codified, uh, as a requirement because it's, uh, and that's just my recommendation. Uh, so, um, that, that's all I have right now.
Certainly valid, but definitely beyond the scope of this, this particular change.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Freeman?
So I, I just want to make sure I take the opportunity as well to thank you. Um, I noticed the Affordable Housing Dwelling Units change where housing costs, rent or mortgage will not exceed thirty percent of family incomes. And I, I think it's very crucial to in, to include that piece in that it shouldn't exceed thirty percent.
That was, that was specifically requested by Mayor Bell.
I ju- I just want to thank you for, um, and thank Mayor Bell.
Yeah, should thank him before me.
Yes, I'll be sure to make sure I do that.
Additional comments? Commissioner Buxton?
And I don't think it was mentioned yet, all of us today received an email with comments from the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Council as well. So I don't know if staff received that, but if we're not going to vote on this tonight and make some additional changes, I'd certainly hope that that would be taken into account.
No more comments?
But we are, our intent was to have it voted on tonight.
Yeah, we, we planned to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You don't have to vote yes, but we hope you would vote tonight.
I was in the hall when we started up again, so I was under a misin- misimpression there. Sorry about that. Well, I hope we do take their comments into consideration as well.
We certainly will.
Okay, the chair will now entertain a motion on this item. Uh, Commissioner Miller?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Wines?
I move that we, uh, recommend approval of the omnibus text amendments with the addition of the language about, um, uh, the, uh, clarification of, of definitions of, of, uh, design districts that we voted on that to approve last month.
Uh, hold on, before I accept your motion, could the motion include them looking at all the comments that was made here tonight with reference to...
Yes. Plus, uh, shall, let me try again, because I know it's hard to get these motions down. I, I recommend that, that, um, we recom- no. I move that we recommend approval of the omnibus text amendments with the addition of clar- of comments about equity and affordability discussed and, and, uh, recommended last month and with consideration of the changes that have been, or suggested tonight.
Comments, comments.
Comments that have, consideration of the comments made tonight.
Madam Clerk, did you get that?
We, we could work with that. Thankfully, you're on TV.
Okay, uh, do I hear a second? Uh, because the motion is seconded by Commissioner Riley, that we approve the TC one five quadruple zero one with the comments made last month and tonight. All those in favor, let it be known by a, I think we can raise our hands on this one?
Maybe not. It looks like ten, ten to one with Miller voting no.
All those in, all those in opposition, please raise a hand. Okay, so the motion moves forward, ten to one.
Thank you.
Okay, this, item seven on our agenda, the presentation will include A through G, but we will vote on approval on one at a time. A, B, C, and D.
Mr. Chair, we would recommend that you'd also just hold one pub- or one public hearing rather than seven.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
The, the one public hearing, we will receive the presentation for all, what, eight of them? And then we would vote on them one at a time, but public hearing would be one.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Miller with the Planning Department.
Uh, the public hearing is now over.
Thank you. Um, I am here to talk to you about the Local Review Criteria Consolidation Project. It's been going on for some time, so we're excited to be moving forward. Um, I'm going to start this evening with just a little bit of background for those of you who are not familiar with how our Historic Preservation Program works. Wanted to give you a better understanding of how this piece that we're asking you to make a recommendation on tonight fits into the larger puzzle. Um, so I'm going to give a little bit of background before introducing the, the actual items. Um, so first of all, we'll talk about, um, we have two different kinds of local historic designations. One are local historic districts, the other are local historic landmarks. Um, districts are a neighborhood or group of properties, intact, uh, hold on to some of their initial characteristics from when they were built, um, an essential part of our history as a community, um, and recognized as a district, as a group of properties. Those are designated as a historic district overlay, uh, so it's a zoning overlay district. Um, and each of those, when they were designated, uh, we've got seven of them, uh, Cleveland Street, Downtown Durham, Fayetteville Street, Holloway Street, Moorhead Hill, Trinity Heights, and Watts Hill and Dale, um, designated anywhere from nineteen eighty-seven through two thousand and three. Um, at the time each one of those was designated, there was a preservation plan that included a survey of the, of the district, um, an architectural and, uh, historical background, um, as well as, uh, criteria for reviewing changes to those properties. Our local historic landmarks, um, these are supposed to be sort of the most significant for any number of different reasons, whether they're associated with important people in Durham's history, um, important events, their architecture is really one of a kind or a great example of something, uh, here in Durham. Um, or there's also the potential for prehistoric, uh, significance to be why some landmark is designated. Generally, these are individual properties or in some cases, like West Village, you'll have a group of individual properties, um, that are designated together. We currently have approximately eighty local landmarks designated in the city and two in the county. So one of the things of note for both local landmark properties and local district properties, um, this is a, an excerpt from our Unified Development Ordinance, but it also mirrors the state statute, um, for dealing with local des- historic designations. Um, after the time that the property is designated historic, um, no feature, uh, as exterior feature or other designated portion of the building can be erected, altered, restored, moved, or demolished within or on the historic district or landmark until after a certificate of appropriateness, or COA, as we call them, um, has been submitted to and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, so this is the crux of what we're getting at today. There are a set of criteria that the Historic Preservation Commission uses in reviewing changes to those properties, um, and that's, uh, what we're discussing this evening. The Historic Preservation Commission, uh, that I mentioned, they are nine members that are appointed by the city and county elected officials, serving the community, um, to make both, uh, they have two functions. One is as a quasi-judicial board and the review and approval of certificates of appropriateness, again, using the local review criteria that were adopted by the elected officials. Um, in their, uh, advisory role, they also provide general recommendations on historic preservation and historic resources to both the city and county. So I've mentioned the local review criteria. Currently, um, the way that these criteria are set out, I mentioned each one of our local historic districts was a, uh, is, is a zoning overlay, and there was a preservation plan adopted at the time of designation. Those preservation plans, each one of them, um, for, we've got six different plans, uh, has a set of criteria that are applied to that specific historic district when properties come in for changes to the district, uh, to a property within the district. Um, to contrast, our local historic landmarks, I'll reference the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Um, many folks are familiar with those, uh, standards because of going through the Historic Tax Credit Program. Um, as Sarah mentioned earlier, the local districts and sort of the National Register that deals with the tax credit program, program are completely separate. However, this was a case where our local ordinances referenced the criteria used in the National Register. So that's a bit of background about, uh, that sort of help you understand how this piece fits into our current Historic Preservation Program. So the items before you today, it's seven different items. The first is actually a new document with local review criteria in it. The other items are the revised preservation plans that previously included a set of criteria, or removing those criteria and referencing this new document. So to talk about the review criteria document itself first, one of the things that it does is it takes the criteria from each one of the districts currently and consolidates them into one document. In addition, it creates local review criteria that are not just the secretary's standards for landmark properties. They are very much based on the, both the secretary's standards that have been used in the past and the commission's sort of precedent for interpreting those criteria, but is specifically calling out how we deal with various different situations in order to give a little bit more clarity for those properties. One of the things that was lacking in the previous criteria were clear criteria for rights of way within the district. For local landmarks, those designations don't include right of way, but any of the districts, the right of way is part of what's designated. Therefore, we wanted to have clear criteria, clear understanding of how we wanted to apply them in the rights of way. In addition, we have included criteria for cemeteries and archaeological sites. We don't have any that are designated sort of separately, but certainly have some of our landmark properties that have archaeological potential or that have small family cemeteries on them, and we wanted to make sure that those were protected as well. And finally, the review criteria also distinguish very clearly between how contributing and non-contributing properties are addressed, and I will jump ahead and jump back in a minute. So every single, I mentioned in the preservation plans, we have surveyed, each one of them when they were adopted, all the properties in the neighborhood were surveyed. Each one of them is called out with a historic and architectural significance of either contributing to the historic, to the historic character of the district, or non-contributing to the historic character of the district. So those two classifications, in past practice, there has not been clear guidance in the criteria that have been adopted for how distinctions between those two properties should be made. There are definitely distinctions, though, in how the Historic Preservation Commission has in its tenure carried out, applying the criteria to each of those structures, essentially giving more leeway to properties that were considered non-contributing. So part of what we are doing with this revision is to clearly differentiate between contributing and non-contributing properties so that folks have a very good understanding as they're going into a project, what applies to them. The final bullet here, this is the other six items besides the review criteria. Updating each one of the preservation plans, we removed the existing criteria, we make reference to the new criteria document, and we've gone through and reassessed and revised where needed the significance of the properties that are included, their contributing or non-contributing status. Because we are clearly differentiating in the criteria between contributing and non-contributing, we wanted to make sure that we had an up-to-date assessment of those properties, and have also included in the document a commitment to reassessing on a regular basis, proposing every five years. So just a quick overview, as I mentioned, this project has been in the works for some time, it's a relatively large undertaking, but just wanted to give you some sense of what some of the public involvement has been in this process. The project kicked off in December of two thousand and twelve, where we had two separate introductory meetings, letting folks know that this project was beginning, that what sort of the scope of the project was and how people could be involved and get in touch with the folks drafting the changes. In May of two thousand and thirteen, we had a series of focus group meetings to try and address some specific concerns that had come up with certificate of appropriateness cases over the past six months prior, to make sure that the changes that we are proposing in this document were going to be addressing those issues. Then in July of two thousand and fourteen, we had a complete draft of just the criteria piece of this document. We held another two public meetings in order to get feedback on the draft criteria and get any ideas from folks about whether they thought that the concerns that they had raised and others had raised were being addressed in that draft. And then this past July, we had an additional two meetings with the complete document revised criteria from the previous year's input, and all of the introductory material that are sort of intended to help folks understand and navigate this whole process better. So then, we began the adoption process. We started with the Historic Preservation Commission. This was considered by them in September, and then in October gave their unanimous recommendation of approval for this, with several items were then incorporated into this version of the document, which brings us to today, to your consideration in this public hearing. It will then go on to both City Council and the Board of County Commissioners for public hearings before final adoption. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Denise, did you want to speak to this item? Okay, Denise Hester.
Good evening, Commissioners. Denise Hester, thirty-five twenty-six Abercrombie Drive in Durham. This item actually is probably more appropriate for the previous UDO discussion, but it had already started before I could sign up. But I think it's still applicable to the entire local historic district process. I'm concerned that the process for approval of local historic districts, we reference the petition process, the need for it, not the need for it. There's a gray area there when your local historic district has state-owned properties in it. We found that out in a altercation with the demolition of the Rivera House at the corner of Lawson and Fayetteville Street. What we found, and this item went all the way to the Attorney General's Office, the university wanted to tear it down, the local historic district people wanted to preserve it in some manner. And what we understood, and I could be wrong in my interpretation, but what we understood was during the approval process, that because it was a state-owned property, the Council of State had to actually, this was told to us, the Council of State had to actually approve the local historic district, be one of the approving parties. I don't know whether that is true or not, but that was the explanation that was given to us from the Attorney General's Office. So, that brings me to the point of explicitly understanding what approvals are necessary when you have other governmentally owned properties in your local historic district. I think it needs to be really clear so that there's not an out later in the process when you get into disagreements over preservation issues in terms of who has the final say or who didn't weigh in. I don't even know, I'm not sure whose responsibility it would have been to advance the item to the Council of State. I would have assumed it would have been either the city, the county government, both, planning commission, planning staff, I'm not sure. It's a gray area, and I think it needs to kind of be fleshed out because there's, other than Fayetteville Street, there may be, I'm not entirely sure, but I think Watts Hill and Dale has some of the same, may have some of the same issues, and at some point, there might be some interaction there. So I would like to see some investigation and understanding of just whose approval is necessary through the chain of command for approving local historic districts and/or making changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public, people in the audience that'd like to speak to this issue? Any other members of the audience that'd like to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back before the Commissioners. Commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have followed this project with some interest and have attended some of the meetings that the staff has sponsored. And generally, as a sometime applicant on my own property and then assisting other people with their properties in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, have seen some of the problems that this document is meant to address, especially the problems associated with new construction or modification of a property that's been classified as non-contributing. And I am grateful that this document, the new review criteria seeks to address those in order to give better guidance to the Historic Preservation Commission as they deal with these applications. Having said that, though, I'm not perfectly satisfied with all the provisions that are in it. And if I may, I'd like to draw to staff's attention my objection to the maintenance provision that's on page thirty-six of the document. So this is with regard to what requires a COA when a property is classified as non-contributing. The modification or installation or replacement of windows and doors not facing the street. I guess this is a question, if the house or structure is on a corner, Lisa, would not facing the street be both street faces?
That's correct.
All right, well, then I'm satisfied on that. With regard to the last bullet there, alteration of architectural details and cladding material, you won't have to get a COA for that for?
For non-contributing properties, that's the provision.
That's, in my opinion, you could wipe out the rest of it and just have that provision. Alteration of architectural details means so little or encompasses so much to me that I don't see how that is a useful review criteria for any quasi judicial body, it's just too broad. I mean, everything on the exterior of a structure could be classified as architectural detail. You could tear it down and start over without a COA, and that's not what's intended here, is it?
No, we can look at modifying that language to be clearer.
I think that we can get much closer to what we mean, and actually, in other places here, we clearly contemplate modifications significantly less than that as actually requiring a COA. If I may, Mr. Chairman, while I have the microphone, ask the staff to look at page forty-four. This is just a, I guess, a petty detail, but since these illustrations will be used by members of the public to guide what they do, there's a structure there that is identified as a new accessory structure in the Watts Hill and Dale District that's actually across the street from me, and it's not new, it's a modification to an existing structure. However, there is a really good new structure, accessory structure on Alabama Avenue that would make a great illustration if you want to send somebody out with a camera to substitute a picture and keep the same caption. On page forty-seven and sixty-one, my objections are the same, and these are statements with regard to non-contributing properties in residential and non-residential historic districts. And that's in A1, modifications to structure shall not completely change the architectural style of the original structure. Again, not completely change is so broad in what it encompasses that it is not an effective guideline. I just don't see how that can steer, tell anybody how to rule or even shape a ruling. When you look at page forty-eight, just across the way, though, we contemplate for new structures as opposed to existing non-contributing properties, new structures, scale, height, and massing. So we have the tools and the language that can help us say what we mean here. I mean, I don't see a problem with approving a COA for an existing non-contributing structure as long as we respect some of the scale, height, and massing issues that appear. So, I mean, we're, we've got the tools labeled, I would like to see them transferred over so that we avoid saying things like, "shall not completely change." I don't know what that means. That appears in, on page forty-seven and page sixty-one. I mean, as it's written, the standards for new structures are stricter than modifications to existing structures that are non-contributing, and I'm not sure that's actually what was intended. And with that, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments, thank you.
Commissioner Freeman?
Commissioner Freeman? Just two questions. I wanted to know what the basis was for the five-year reassessment for the contributing and non-contributing?
Certainly, we sort of picked an interval that we thought would not be so onerous considering that we have a lot of these districts and a lot of properties in them, but also wouldn't be so spread out that it would allow time to pass potentially needing a change to the contributing or non-contributing status without having the opportunity to do that. So we were kind of trying to find a middle ground between those two things. It was something that was discussed at the Historic Preservation Commission, that maybe five years was too often and ten years would be sufficient, but there wasn't any strong direction, so we've left it at five for now.
It probably would be better to do a longer timeframe considering that planning staff is short on time.
Sure.
And I would like to make sure that my local historic district gets to put on a work plan, I'm biased in this, but also additionally, for the relocation standards and understand, like, walk me through if, if you're setting up or relocating a property that would be demolished, it probably doesn't meet current standards, you're actually making sure that you're actually adding on that they, once they place the property on the new lot or new space within a historic district, or?
So the, let me back up just a second. The relocation and demolition standards are two separate situations.
Okay.
They're grouped into one section. The demolition is, you know, obviously, when you are tearing down a structure. The relocation standards are if you are moving a structure from one place in a district to another, or moving a structure into a district as has been done before.
Okay. And you're asking for those structures to be, follow the new construction standards? Is that like normal protocol is what I'm getting at, like? What I'm concerned is that, or?
New construction standards for placement. So essentially, we've established placement standards for new construction that look at the placement of other contributing structures first in the block face and then in the district as a whole, and that's what we would be looking for someone to follow in moving a historic structure into a local district or within a local district.
Okay. I would make this suggestion that you do separate the placement, the relocation and the demolition, but I mean, it's not a major. Just because I've had some concerns about the commingling of that.
Additional comments? Commissioner Whitman?
I've learned a lot, just listening. You know, my wife and I, we, when we go to other cities, we like to visit historical neighborhoods, and, and one of the common thing that we see is who lived in what house. Durham has a lot of rich history, and we pay more attention to the architectural value than what people that live there contribute to a community. You know, I happen to live in one of the old neighborhoods, and, and we lose a lot of history because we don't have information that would keynote or, or... because we don't have information that would keynote or say what this person, I mean, this is, this house is old and such and such a person contributed to the community. You know, Salisbury is a good example. You can walk any, you can walk any historical neighborhood in Salisbury and you can read the history of a neighborhood just by signs that point out who lived in those communities. You know, we don't have that. And each time I go through one of these historical preservation, I don't hear any of that. I don't hear where our history is being landmarked, you know, and it should be. You know, we have, this is a wonderful city, and we have wonderful, rich history. And who's going to protect that for us if preservation is not?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitley. You want to address that, I think, Tom though, about the plaque program?
Yes, you and I.
So Commissioner Whitley, I wanted to let you know that Preservation Durham, which is Durham's private historic preservation organization, does have a plaque program which is actually contemplated by an ordinance in the UDO that allows for the erection of plaques on houses to accomplish just exactly what you're talking about. The program is relatively new, but there are about a hundred and fifty or more plaques up. It's a voluntary program, so the homeowner has to ask for it. It does require the compilation of the history of the house, not merely its architecture and structure, but of all the people who lived in it. I do these applications for people. Right now, the plaques are concentrated, quite frankly, in the more affluent historic neighborhoods, and there are fewer of them in the less affluent historic neighborhoods. But I can tell you, the people who are associated with the program are very concerned about that and are working to make sure that plaques are going up all over town. I'm working on a plaque application on East Main Street right now and have several others kind of in the works. Unfortunately, the cost of the plaques, they're cast bronze. That's the only material that actually lasts. When we cast about other cities, about how to do the plaque program, they said, "Don't do painted wood because every ten years you have to buy new ones." Say, "Do bronze. It's expensive upfront, but you never have to go back." Well, bronze is expensive upfront, and that's another limiting factor. So it's not a perfect program, but the program is out there. And so, but I would like to echo what you say. It's not just the buildings, it's the people. And I wish there was some way the City of Durham could be more effective at marking the historic neighborhoods than we currently are. I worked on getting the city to adopt its first historic district ordinances years ago, back when we had the Historic District Commission. And one of the things we talked about was a system of uniform signage, but that part of it has never come through. That's a question, quite frankly, of city priorities and how the city spends money. But with people like you and me nipping at their heels, maybe we can get that fixed. I certainly know that there is no opposition on the part of staff to improving the program across the board.
Okay, Commissioner Freeman.
I was just going to echo that in that I hear you, Commissioner Whitley and Commissioner Whit, Miller, that I wanted to know if there was a process in place of moving those plaques actually into a historic process, I guess, a historic recognition within a local community, similar to how the Pauli Murray House has kind of moved forward?
I'm not sure. You're wondering whether there's a way to require plaques for local historic districts or what?
No, if there were a way to kind of, but similar with, stimulate that process so that the plaques that are located on houses, which do identify the people in history that are of significant, I mean, you know, I don't know what the word is, but pretty much just knowing, like, is there a way to move a process along in this historic preservation process? Like, or, I know this review is for architectural, and is there anything that you could think of within?
To try and encourage folks to do the plaque program?
To encourage them to do the plaque program, maybe something so that it recognizes or identifies not just the houses that are contributing, but also the plaques that are contributing in the neighborhoods, or just something separate that does?
Got it. We definitely, so one of the things when we made some revisions to the Historic Landmark Program recently, one of the things that we added in is a requirement to put up a plaque that actually was designed to work with those from Preservation Durham in order to identify it as a historic landmark. So that's one way that we're sort of trying to tie into that. It's not something that we've looked at for historic districts. I think that from our perspective, looking more at delineating the district as a whole as a first step is probably where I would think we would want to start.
So specifically for the Pauli Murray House, that has a plaque. How did that process work? And is that outlined in this guide?
That is not. It's not part of the local historic process at all. So I can't answer that question.
Just Preservation Durham. Is there any way to connect the two, more than just the plaque is what I'm getting at? So that there was a way to list kind of those identifying homes that are?
The information that, in terms of the plaques provided inside of the preservation plans or, I mean, there's all kinds of-
Just like a reference point so that people know where that information is. Like, I mean, I think Commissioner Whitley is pretty well informed about the things that are going on in the community and the fact that he doesn't know about that plaque program.
Sure. I think mapping out where the existing plaques are would be a simple process.
Wait a minute.
Just on that?
You through?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wenders?
I'd just, I'd like to, would you please comment on Ms. Hester's issue about state-owned property and the process?
I can confirm that the issue that she raised, which came to our attention during the potential demolition of the Rivera House, one of the things that we were just, we're going to be doing some more discussion with our city attorney in order to look at, so one of the, one of the issues is looking at when the state purchased property. There are state-owned properties that were purchased after the district was created, specifically in the Fayetteville Street District. So we need to have good records of when that occurred because if the district was in place when they purchased the property, they are subject to those requirements regardless of the Council of State requirement for it. So that only applies if they already owned the property, and we are trying to put a new zoning overlay on top of that property. So it is an issue that we're trying to get more clarity on so that we fully understand which properties are subject to that designation and can get some clarity about whether there's some possibility for getting district authority over some of these other properties. I'm not sure what the likelihood of that is.
So where is that in the work plan process? That Rivera House was torn down a long time ago.
It was. So this has come up, this, the question of, as we are looking at revising these preservation plans and essentially a zoning map change again for each of these, it's been part of conversations that have come up around that again.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yeah, Mike? I want to go back to, I thank you for the information you've shared about the plaque system. But the point I was trying to raise was that it's not a criteria. And if we start making it a criteria, we would glean more information to share with people as they go through the neighborhoods. And how do you make that possible?
So I would say that the idea of people significant in our history is very much a part of our district and landmark designations. If you've read through any of the preservation plans, the history in some of these neighborhoods definitely talk about people who are important to its development. In addition, we do have some landmark designations that are mainly significant for their association with a particular person. And so that is part of it. It's not, it could probably be highlighted more, but it is certainly a part of the overall Historic Preservation Program.
But it can't be made a criteria?
Sarah Young with the Planning Department. I think there may be a little bit of a disconnect. So the state legislation that basically sets out certificate of appropriateness process and requires that we have criteria in place in districts, basically requires that any physical modifications to a structure be done according to criteria, criteria implied that deals with the physical aspects of that structure. So cultural references, other historical references that are not tied to the architecture are really just kind of beyond the scope of what we can deal with in terms of criteria.
So I think the disconnect, though, has to do with, the criteria that we're talking about is when somebody gets a certificate of appropriateness to make a change. Say, "I want to take this window out and put another window in." The time when the cultural significance, the people part of it, who lived in the house comes up, is not at the COA process when you're dealing with each owner's desire to make some modification or change to the exterior of a property that's already in a district. It comes up when the district is created. One of the things that has to be created before the council, city council or the Board of Canon Commissioners can approve a district is a thorough survey of all the historical assets in the, in the district. This survey is by custom, but not necessarily, necessarily have to be this way, but in Durham, it has always been done by Historic Preservation experts. And they do, this is a gigantic document. It's structure by structure, who built it, who lived in it, and when there, when something's really significant, that that's there. All of this information is actually in the library online when somebody applies, and all of that's there. Whether or not we have done a very good job of making it readily available by publications and what have you, certainly, we could do more. We could exploit the data that we've collected more effectively. The plaque program that I mentioned before takes it even further, and so does the landmark designation. Those documents are really wonderful. But again, that depends upon the owner applying for landmark status. We don't have very many landmarks designated in Durham. But for the districts, all of that information is there, but you have to know where to find it and you have to go look for it. But it is there. We do collect it. It's the question is, are we exploiting it as effectively as we could? And then I couldn't agree with you more, more.
I have one question. This is a lot of material. I don't want to carry it around with me. Is it available on the internet, on the homepage?
Yes. We have a special section of our ordinance right now under Current Topics that has this item there. When it is through the adoption process, it's under, we have a special tab for Historic Preservation. It will be front and center there, so it's accessible to folks.
Very good. No other comments? The chair will entertain a motion on this item. Nobody want to move that?
Mr. Chairman, I was prepared to make a motion, but Commissioner Member Freeman, I think, has another question.
Just for the sake of clarity and my peace of mind, under demolition by neglect, where it says any fault, defect, condition in the building, which, is it possible to switch that to?
That's actually a direct excerpt from our ordinance. So if we were going to change that, we would want to change the ordinance, which would be a separate process.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that that's not with any default, defect, or what have you, that it becomes a demolition by neglect, but rather that it renders the property or the structure unsafe or properly wore tight is the criteria, like it's, I would, how would we go about changing the ordinance?
It would be a standard textative process or something. We can look at clarification in the next round of tech changes.
Okay. So would you have to wait to change this?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion here, but I want the, my fellow commission members to know that I'm going to vote against it without some assurance that we're going to fix that broad language that I objected to. I mean, my objections there are not minor ones. They're serious ones, and I don't think this should go forward unless those are repaired. But because the, it's late and we still have agenda items, and I have taken up a lot of the commission's time, I'm going to move that we send this forward to the council and to the Board of Canon Commissioners with a favorable recommendation on condition that the language is clarified on page thirty-six and on pages forty-seven and sixty-one with regard to the overbroad language that I previously pointed out.
Do the commissioners understand the motion before us? Do I hear a second to approving? Oh, okay, hold on, timeout. We're going to take these one item at a time?
I'm just talking about seven A.
Seven A, okay. So this is seven A, Local Review Updates in Coalition Consolidation Updates. So seven A, all those in favor of approving seven A, please, let me have a roll call vote.
I missed, who made that a second?
Second.
Whitley?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Busby?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wenders? The motion carries nine to two.
Okay, motion approved nine to two. Can I get a motion for seven B?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the item seven B, the modification to the Cleveland Street and Holloway Street Preservation Plan update to the city council, and that would just go to the city council, is that correct, to the city council with a favorable recommendation on condition that the language contained in the modified local review criteria be fixed to resolve the ambiguous language identified on pages thirty-six, forty-seven, and sixty-one.
Motion by Miller, second by Busby.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Busby?
Aye.
Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs? Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wenders? It carries nine to two.
Okay, motion carries nine to two. Motion for seven C.
Mr. Chairman, is it acceptable to the commission members and the staff to simply say, "I make the same motion with regard to seven C that I made with regard to seven B"?
Any objections?
Then that's my motion.
Do I hear a second or? Second by Commissioner Riley.
Ms. Wenders?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Busby? Motion carries ten to one.
He can change.
Yes.
Okay, so it's.
So motion carries.
Nine to two.
Nine to two, thank you.
Okay, seven D.
Mr. Chairman, I make the same motion with regard to seven D that I made with regard to seven B.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Whitley.
Thank you. Mr. Miller? Mr. Riley? Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wonders?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Busby? Motion carries nine to two.
Motion for seven E?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to item seven E of our agenda, I make the same motion that I made with regard to item seven B.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyman.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman? Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Busby?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wonders? Motion carries nine to two.
Motion carries nine to two. Motion for seven F.
Mr. Chairman, I make the same motion with regard to item seven F that I made with regard to item seven B.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyman.
Mr. Busby?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wonders?
Aye.
Motion carries nine to two.
Motion carries nine to two. Seven G.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to item seven G, I make the same motion that I made with regard to item seven B.
Second by Commissioner Busby.
Ms. Freeman? Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Mr. Goesch?
In favor?
Mr. Busby?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Wonders?
Aye.
Motion carries nine to two.
All right, that motion carries nine to two. We on item G, presentation, compact neighborhood, future land use update.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Hannah Jacobson with the Durham Planning Department. I last came before this group in August of this year to give you a report on our compact neighborhood planning process. Tonight, I am also giving an informational presentation on staff's recommendations, so you will not be asked to vote tonight, but we are anticipating a public hearing in January of next year. So in the intervening months, we do encourage you to look over these reports. I know there was a lot to look through tonight. Look over the reports, feel free to ask staff questions, we're free to meet with you individually. And so with that, won't belabor the point, the purpose of this project has been to update the future land use map of the Durham Comprehensive Plan so that it aligns better with the planned Durham Orange Light Rail Transportation Line. It also gives us an opportunity to reengage with the community. Many of these areas have changed dramatically in the last 10 years since the Comprehensive Plan was adopted. It also gives us an opportunity to help identify issues early on that should be addressed in compact neighborhoods prior to any rezoning or the opening of the Durham Orange Light Rail Line. Just a little bit of background, the 2005 Comprehensive Plan introduced this idea of development tiers, and the compact neighborhood tier was introduced as a way to promote higher density, mix of uses, and more walkable environments around the proposed regional rail transit stations. A first phase of the regional rail transit station was, transit was supposed to be from Durham to Wake County, so compact neighborhoods were put into place around the Medical Center at Ninth Street, around Alston Avenue, and then two down in the Research Triangle Park. We, of course, now know that the first line is the Durham Orange Light Rail Line, which follows, which covers areas in Lee Village, Patterson Place, and South Square. And in these areas, which were intended to be later phases of the light rail system, they were designated as suburban transit areas. And these compact neighborhoods and suburban transit areas are important because our region is growing tremendously quickly. Last year, we were identified as one of the 100 largest metro areas within the country, and we're growing fast. We're the 15th fastest growing of all of those, of those top 100. And so looking to compact development as a strategy can help to minimize urban sprawl, it can help to promote a more fiscally responsible pattern of growth by reducing infrastructure costs, it can help to reduce transportation costs for households, and it can connect people who do not have access to cars, either by necessity or by choice, to jobs and other opportunities that are throughout the region. So a little bit more about what a compact neighborhood is. It's somewhat of a difficult term, but they're areas near planned regional rail transit stations that are envisioned over time to become more high-density, mixed-use, and pedestrian-friendly. We tend to think of them as having more of a street-oriented buildings, so buildings that are built up to a sidewalk or up to the street and not far set back from a road, maybe not, without a parking lot in front of it. We tend to think of compact neighborhoods as having more of a grid layout of streets, for example, appropriately scaled streets for the pedestrian or for people who are on bikes, and having greater transportation choices as well. In addition to these general characteristics of a compact neighborhood, we've included two additional ones. The first one is this notion of tapering development intensity. The goal is to have the most intense development right around the light rail station, and then as you transition further away from the light rail station to the surrounding areas, maybe a single-family residential neighborhood or a sensitive environmental area that you reduce the density, you taper down. And so there is a policy that we are introducing, it's in your staff report, a policy that we are introducing to the Comprehensive Plan or we're recommending to include in the Comprehensive Plan that helps to define what these sub-districts are and the intent of this tapering development intensity. Another concept that we are characteristic of a compact neighborhood is this idea of equitable neighborhood change, acknowledging that change in many of these areas will happen with the introduction of a light rail system, but that the goal is to have those benefits be shared by all. So this corresponds very well with the city and county's resolution on affordable housing, so we're going ahead and introducing a proposed policy to the Comprehensive Plan that largely mimics the language within the city and county resolution on affordable housing. To back up a little bit, talk more broadly about station area planning. It's a big undertaking that includes infrastructure planning, it certainly includes affordable housing planning. The focus and the scope of this project is on land use planning, and we're at the very beginning of that task. Land use planning oftentimes requires a three-step process. The first step, which is where we are now, is updating the Comprehensive Plan and amending the future land use map. The second step would be looking at making any provision, changes to the Unified Development Ordinance that would be needed in some of these new compact neighborhoods. And then finally, once strategies for affordable housing and infrastructure plans are in place, we would look to initiate zoning map changes within the compact neighborhoods. And of course, a step after that is that change in development will be incremental, and it'll happen over time, largely through private development, again, over several decades. For this study, we've been looking at five different areas, which I'll get more into detail in. I mentioned that we've been working on this project since the beginning of the year. We've been busy, we've had 12 neighborhood meetings with some good public participation in them. First round was held in April, where we invited people, we introduced the concept of a compact neighborhood and had people work in small groups to help us understand where folks felt this type of development was appropriate, and more importantly, where it was not appropriate. So from that, we compiled a lot of those recommendations from the neighborhood, came up with some initial staff recommendations, presented those at meetings in June and in August. And in the intervening months, we prepared the draft reports, which you have before you tonight, and posted them online, and in just last month, we held two additional meetings to get feedback on those reports. So if I could get a little bit more into depth into what our recommendations are, the first compact neighborhood that we'll take a look at is the Lee Village. Lee Village is at the intersection, is near the intersection of Interstate 40 and Highway 54. For those of you who aren't familiar with the area, there's, it's characterized by low-density suburban development with almost a rural character to it. There's a lot of vacant land there, actually. Strangely enough, it's near one of the most congested corridors in the state, NC 54, and there are some significant natural features kind of bordering the area, the Little Creek Bottomlands. Our existing future land use map shows a 356-acre suburban transit area. It's outlined in blue on the left-hand side of the screen with a combination of higher-density residential uses surrounded by some office and commercial. Our proposed boundary extends the compact neighborhood to the west and to the north, but it excludes an area of some residential neighborhoods, Eastwood Park, and I'll talk a little bit more about that right now. Eastwood Park is currently designated as a, as commercial on our future land use map. Based on conversations that we had with the neighborhood and a recommendation from the NC 54 corridor study, we're also recommending that it be changed to low-density residential to match what's currently, currently there. A second kind of cleanup of the future land use map is for a property that's owned by the North Carolina Botanical Garden Foundation. They have a permanent conservation easement on this property that's east of George King Road. We're recommending that it be changed to recreation and open space, and this is consistent with other privately-held permanent conservation easements. Okay, to get a little bit more into the boundary and how we arrived at this boundary, again, as I mentioned, we've recommended expanding the boundary to the east, near, sorry, to the west, looking at area number one, this is called the Medmont Farms tract. It's extended this far to align with the boundary of Chapel Hill, and this is primarily to help facilitate the development of the, or the build-out of the Collector Street Plan in this area to help, to promote connectivity to the station and improve circulation within this area to help alleviate traffic congestion on 54. Our northern boundary, near number two, that's again, it largely follows the kind of the half-mile boundary from the station and is consistent with what we heard at the community meeting in June. It does not include the neighborhood, and that is at Culpeper. We're using Interstate 40 as kind of a hard boundary, makes some sense. And then we've included an area, if you look at number four on the screen, an area that's south of 54. This is already included within the suburban transit area. We're recommending that it stay within the suburban transit area because of improvements that have been recommended and are actually within the state funding process for Farrington Road and for Falcon Bridge, for an extension of Falcon Bridge Drive. That would help to better connect this area that's south of 54 to the light rail station. Again, as I mentioned, the Eastwood Park and this neighborhood just to the north, we're recommending that they be removed from the compact neighborhood, and the other two, Little Creek Bottomlands indicated here, and then just the amount of undeveloped and vacant property that's in close proximity to the station. Key issues that we're likely to see moving forward, a lot of this document and a lot of this report is to identify what those issues are now. We might not have immediate solutions to what they are, but it's somewhat of a scoping document so that we can identify what those issues are as we move forward through the rest of the process and certainly to opening day of the light rail and beyond. Extending public utilities to this area, it's largely within the county right now, so looking at annexation studies and what it might take to extend public utilities will be a major undertaking. Building sufficient transportation infrastructure to relieve traffic congestion, that's a major concern, that certainly is, we hear, when we go out to the neighborhoods. Coordinating and phasing the development in a way that makes sense, this is probably one of our last greenfield sites within Durham, so doing that in a way that, that makes sense will be, will be a challenge. And then transitioning to some of the more environmentally sensitive areas and low-density residential will also be a concern as we move forward. The next compact neighborhood kind of along the line is the Patterson Place Station. This is near Interstate 40 and 15501. It's largely an auto-oriented, commercial district characterized by big-box retailers. Patterson Place Shopping Center was laid out with the intention of transitioning over time into a more transit-oriented development, but that's kind of the only one in the area. There is a proposed suburban tran, there is an existing suburban transit area in place at this site. We're proposing to expand the boundary to 602 acres. The expansion would happen mostly south of Danzier Drive, all the way down to Old Chapel Hill Road. It also expands and follows, instead of following the former floodplain lines, it follows recorded easements and property lines. This is for legal reasons moving forward. To highlight just a few of the areas, number two, I had mentioned, this area north of 15501, Southwest Durham Drive is expected to be extended across 15501, which could open up this area for better access to the station. We are concerned about how close the boundary gets to some of the environmental issue, the environmental resources that are in this area, however, we are trying to follow that recorded legal sewer easement. Number four, we've excluded the Githens Middle School from the boundary. Previously, I believe it had been inside the boundary. Otherwise, most of the area is either already kind of commercial, big-box retailers, or high-density residential. Some key issues moving forward, there's a proposed conversion of US Highway 15501 into a limited access freeway. That was based on a study that was done in 1994 that I believe this commission has heard a little bit about. Doing that might effectively cut off the north side of the station area from the south side of the station area. I think that we would be interested in participating in a study that looked to reexamine that recommendation. that recommendation to be more in line with the idea of a transit-oriented district. We also have concerns and think that a key issue moving forward will be how, the sensitivity to environmentally important areas like the Dry Creek and the New Hope Creek, and then again, how to transition to low-density residential areas that are on the fringes. Moving along to South Square and the Martin Luther King Jr. area, this is near the intersection or the interchange of US Highway 15501 bypass and US Highway 15501 business. So it's former, it's near the site of the former South Square Mall, Target, Sam's Club, to give you a little bit of context. Again, it's, so it's largely an auto-oriented, commercial district with big-box retailers, and this area really does have a significant amount of multifamily apartment complexes and office uses as well. There is an existing suburban transit area in this district. We're proposing largely extending, expanding the boundary for the new compact neighborhood to the south to include more area around the Martin Luther King Jr. Station, and we're proposing to remove this area that's to the northwest of the 15501 bypass. We're also proposing to extend it to the east of the South Square Station to take advantage of a lot of the vacant and underutilized commercial property that's, that's to the east of here. I don't know that I have too much to elaborate on this one, so I can be brief. In general, the boundary includes kind of the commercial, big-box retailers. It does not, and it, it also includes some of the multifamily apartment complexes, does not include the environmentally sensitive areas, and it does not include single-family Some key issues moving forward, again, I think that the future of US 15501 business through this corridor may need to be looked at, and there's some possibilities for creating a more transit-oriented district around that. And looking at how, how the redevelopment of those existing commercial, commercial shopping centers happens, as mixed-use centers, there's still, you know, is a market out there for, for commercial, big-box centers, so how that happens over time will be, will be interesting to see. Okay, the next compact neighborhood is, is along Irwin Road near the Duke University, near Duke University and some medical centers, so there's a strong institutional presence in this area. There's also a significant amount of multifamily, both older multifamily apartment complexes and newer, more mixed-use, uses along, along the north side of Irwin Road. And then amongst all of that commotion is the Crest Street neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood made up of largely African-American families that, that's in the middle of everything. There is an existing compact neighborhood located in this, in this area. It's 475 acres. We're proposing a new boundary to that compact neighborhood that would be 412 acres. The, the boundary changes exclude Duke University from, from the compact neighborhood, and this is consistent with what was done in Ninth Street. And it also, it excludes the Crest Street neighborhood, I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. And it extends the boundary to the east of La Salle Street to a greater degree than it is today. Because of the removal of Duke University and Crest Street, we are left with this kind of strange appendage that's more closely related with the Ninth Street Compact Neighborhood tier. But that, that's already in the compact neighborhood, and we didn't find a compelling reason to remove it. So again, this is a cleanup of the future land use map. This is part of Duke University's campus. It's north of Irwin Road, which is just off the map. On the future land use map, it's designated as commercial. We're recommending that it be designated as institutional to be consistent with the rest of Duke's campus and other university-college zoning. Again, we're using, we're making use of large roadways, US Highway 15501 and NC 147 as boundaries. We've removed areas of Duke University from the boundary. Number three is where Crest Street is located. We heard from neighborhood groups somewhat of a mixed reaction about, about this, but overall that they did not want to be included within the compact neighborhood tier. They wanted to preserve the single-family nature of that neighborhood. There are some large apartment complexes in this area. Duke Manor is one that's reaching almost 40 years old, so we see that as an opportunity for redevelopment in the future, and that could lead to some very good things, potentially the, more of a build-out of a street grid network, which would be, which would be very good for this area in terms of relieving traffic congestion. So again, just a few issues moving forward, creating a more complete street network, that's just what I was talking about, the relationship with the university-college zoning and the compact neighborhood tier, as well as trying to divert impacts to the Crest Street neighborhood. Okay, finally, sorry, this is a long presentation. Finally, is the Alston Avenue Compact Neighborhood. For those of you, just to orient you a little bit, the Durham Freeway and the NC, and the NCRR Railroad Corridor run kind of directly through the, through the station area. There are a number of more active industrial uses that are along that corridor that still use the freight spurs. There's also a lot of institutional or civic uses ranging from churches, the Durham Rescue Mission, to the Boys and Girls Club schools in this area. There's a lot of residential neighborhoods, many of which are historic, and of course, there's been the adaptive reuse of many mill buildings in the area as well. There's an existing compact neighborhood in the Alston Avenue area. It includes areas of Golden Belt Historic District, it includes areas of the East Durham Historic District. The proposed boundary removes or brings those kind of out of the compact neighborhood using Morning Glory Avenue as kind of the cutoff, and then following some of the East Durham Historic District boundaries. The other major change to this area is that we've included the former Fayette Place site into the proposed compact neighborhood. This aligns, aligns pretty well with the downtown tier, which is located just to the west of the Alston Avenue Proposed Compact Neighborhood. So again, number one is Fayetteville Street, that's the dividing line between the downtown tier and the proposed compact neighborhood tier. Morning Glory Avenue is, forms kind of the northern boundary and does not include the residential portions of the Golden Belt National Historic District, does not include Eastway Mill Village, and does not include the East Durham National Register Historic District. Does however, include number of industrial uses that are along, along the freight rail and then the former Fayette Place. Does not include residential areas south of 147. So some key issues moving forward with the Alston Avenue. We know that this issue of equitable neighborhood change and affordable housing will be a prime issue moving forward. We also see the, kind of the mix of industrial sites with new development and some potential brownfield contamination being an issue as we go ahead. And then particularly in this area, access to this, to the light rail station itself has been a major issue, so through the station area strategic infrastructure study, which is another project I can update you on later, working for, looking for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure access will also be important. Just some next steps moving forward. Just reminder, you guys have the draft reports, but if you can remind people that they are available online, that would be really helpful. As I said before, we're looking to have our public hearings for these in January, so you're warned about that. And then if all, you know, goes as expected, we'll move forward to the city council and county commissioners later on this spring. I forgot to mention, throughout all of our public engagement sessions, the planning commission, many members of the planning commission came, and I really do appreciate taking the time and effort to do so. It's greatly appreciated, and I know we're going to need help moving forward as well, so continued participation is, is welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. I now realize that this is a presentation for discussion and information purposes, and it's not a public hearing, but I do have one member that came here specifically to speak to this, so I'm going to grant Denise Hester time to speak to this. Well, yeah, yeah, I'm going to open it up.
Good evening again, Denise Hester, 3526 Abercrombie Drive. I'm here tonight to support the decision to keep the area south of NC 147 out of the compact district. Back in 2006, citizens overwhelmingly rejected this land use south of the expressway with a standing-room-only crowd, and I'm glad to hear that that affirmation is still in place, because as we know, the compact land designation has the ability to profoundly change the character of communities in which they're located, and I guess we have to exert care in where we actually place them. More recently, in the series of neighborhood meetings, and I'm glad the planning department, to their credit, heard what the neighbors in these areas were saying, it's a 300-plus-acre area bounded roughly by, as you can see, Highway 147, Bacon Street, Lawson Street, Fayetteville Street. But the important thing is that this area is one of the more affordable areas still in our city, in southeast Durham. It's also home to our National Historic District and also our Fayetteville Street Local Historic District, which would be threatened by the entry of high-density housing and intense commercial development that's favored by compact neighborhoods. So, and it's also home to a sizable portion of Durham's historic African-American community. So again, I just wanted to affirm the lineup of the recommendations in this presentation with those expressed by the neighbors at the series of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else come to speak to this? Okay.
So just first, in conjunction with Ms. Hester's comment, I want to say that, I want to make sure that I'm not missing the line coming from Alston Avenue down, from the Alston Avenue Proposed Tier, coming down Morning Glory, it should actually be coming down East Main. And that, making sure that there is a buffer. So the properties on Main Street may be developed, but not properties that are on the backside of Morning Glory, just making sure that, that's clear.
Our, our boundary...
It would just be better if it was on East Main Street.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
And then also, the commotion that you mentioned and the equitable neighborhoods, I wanted to know if there were any other organized, like, university-college zoning groups that you met with? So that university, like, I didn't know that they had something like that.
Oh, Duke University and NCCU are under a special zoning district.
Okay.
It's called university college, and it enables them to do more campus planning, so they do parking, stormwater, sidewalk planning as kind of a master plan. And so, just, it doesn't mean that those aren't transit-oriented zoning districts, it just means that they're kind of special and unique and aren't necessarily, we don't achieve anything more from the compact design district in those areas.
And then also, I wanted to know, I wanted to note both that the equity is, the equity or inequity is around income and race. I don't think that's being specifically said, and it needs to be. And keeping the income and the race, the races, or keeping both of those in line pretty much with what they currently are, or increasing the diversity of it, so. I wasn't sure if it was intentional or not, like, whether or not you, because I know this, that in the previous plan, it was, it was spelled out that the affordable housing was at the 30% versus just being at the 15% affordable. Is that going to be the case going forward, or has that been looked at?
I'm not sure if I know what you're referring to.
In the historic, the historic preservation plan or the UDO conversation, them adding that language to say that the affordable housing is exactly, you know, 30% of your household income maximized.
Commissioner Freeman, that's, if, if that, the omnibus UDO changes are approved, then that would apply to all affordable housing in Durham County.
I just need to make sure that's spelled out.
Yeah.
Those are my, those are my main comments.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page five of your October 215 draft on the Irwin Road, I'm not wild about the disconnected, kind of strange, as you called it, appendage on the north side of the freeway there. I don't see a very compelling reason to include that as part of the, of the compact neighborhood district. And actually, I oppose having a, having a disconnected thing like that. I mean, if we were going to talk about perhaps expanding the boundaries a little bit of the existing Ninth Street District, I would be interested in how we might do that, but to add it to this other district that is not just separated by roadway, but is separated by additional landmass, that just doesn't seem to me like very good planning. How strong is the sentiment in favor of including it?
Sure. Well, I can tell you that, that our conversations with Duke University came about a little bit later in the process, so while that, that area was originally contiguous with the rest of the district, we know that it's, it's a little odd now. So I think that's something that we can take a look at. I'm assuming we can take a look at that and have a broader conversation about whether it should be a part of the Ninth Street District, if it should be a part of this one.
And just to add to that, and it is now, it is now and will be in the future effectively an extension of the Ninth Street District, and it's an area that's already in, designated as a compact neighborhood, and it's an area with a weird mixture of zoning and development and would probably make sense. And it's also near, if, if our friends in Wake County ever decide what they're going to do, it is also very close to, well, next to what would be the West Durham Commuter Rail Station.
All right, where is that station proposed to be? Is it different for the, is it changed from where it used to be?
I don't, don't know where it used to be, it's basically next to the Food Line.
Where Irwin Road dips under and becomes Ninth Street.
Oh, the, the proposed West Durham commuter line was near the parking lot of the Food Line on, between Hillsborough and, and Main Street.
That's different than the Ninth Street Light Rail Station, which is where.
Okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm getting my, my imaginary light rail systems confused.
It's understandable.
My other question concerned the future location of the Romph, which right now is, I think, the favored location is, is along Farrington Road next to I-40 in the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood Tier. I also know that it's very hard to find anybody in that area that favors it going there. My own feeling is, is that a better location, more centrally located along the line, would be in the Patterson Place neighborhood, in the very place where we just approved rezoning for an automobile sales lot, which I thought was a dreadful decision, would be a much better place, dead center in the line to put, and there's lots of vacant land, to put the Romph. I'm just sorry that, that the way we're letting... I'm just sorry that, that the way we're letting things shape up this way. And my question then on that is, is as a result of this process that you've undertaken, Heather, with some sensitivity, and I really appreciate that, because not all of those meetings were initially success, and you immediately responded to try to make them a success. How many rezonings have we got in the pipeline are there for properties located within any of these proposed boundaries where people are trying to rush in and try to make adjustments to our, our zoning map favorable to them in order to either exploit or avoid the consequences of changing compact neighborhood tier boundaries? Well, I mean, are there a lot of them, or?
Commissioner Miller, Pat Young with Planning Department. There's only two that come to mind. I'm looking at Ms. Smith to, to assist me with this. The, the one is, the one that's returning to tomorrow, next week, it seems like tomorrow or next week. Next month, the Farrington, the Farrington residential project. And then there's a smaller mixed-use project called Straw Valley that's in, that's also, that's in the...
Patterson Place.
That's gonna be coming probably in January. Are there any others that you can think of in any of these areas? So I think there's just the two. Certainly, anytime we look to change these, you see a flurry of activity, like you described, Commissioner Miller. So we can keep you up to date of that, and of course, you'll see the cases as they appear.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is all very interesting. And in January, we will be voting on tier boundaries. And that's it. The issue is moving tier boundaries.
Tier boundaries, the handful of land use designation cleanups.
Oh, and comprehensive plan changes.
Yes.
Flum changes.
The flum changes to design district within the compact tiers and the handful of other minor changes that Ms. Jacobs had brought up, as well as the changes of, to the policies in the comp plan to have the affordable housing resolution as a comp plan policy and the sub-district location policies that are currently only in the UDO as part of the comp plan as well.
So for these, we're moving, we're not just creating compact neighborhood tiers. We're actually talking about moving into design districts and, and talking about, we're laying the groundwork for the conversion of these compact neighborhood, new compact neighborhood tiers into design districts and where sub-districts will go. And the sub-districts that we're talking about are Core, Sub One, Sub Two. Anything new or different?
No, it's just the same ones that we were, we created with the Ninth Street District minus the...
The, the business one?
Yes. And just, we had some intent statements for all those in the UDO, and so we're going to add those to the comp plan so that if someone does, before the publicly-initiated rezoning takes place, if someone wants to apply for rezoning, you have clear policy guidance as to what sub-districts should be in place, as well as the affordable housing policy.
I can't wait.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said before, too, I think the staff is just doing an outstanding job at the public hearings. I think, another long nights, which you've clearly gotten used to. But I think it's really helpful to inform the citizens, very approachable, so great job there. I did wanna echo Commissioner Miller's concern about the floating appendage in the Irwin Road area. I, I just don't think that makes a lot of sense either in terms of good planning. I hope we, we take a look at that. And then finally, I just wanted to say, under the Patterson Place, Hannah, you mentioned one, one situation was the planned conversion of fifteen five oh one into a limited access freeway. We dealt with that issue a few months ago. I think it's great if the city would look at the appropriate time to reexamine that designation. I think that causes a huge problem for us to be able to move forward with doing this well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gibbs? Commissioner Wonders?
Well, is your, is this presentation gonna be on your web, website, your webpage where all the stuff of the meetings are? Because I don't think, some of these things were not in our pa- in the packet, I think, like especially the policy change, right?
Those policy changes were within your staff report.
They were?
They were. They were. But we can certainly put the presentation on the website. And, and all of the reports are on there as well, but they're lengthy, so this can be a good summary.
Well, the, well, and I also would like to add the, to your, the other expressions of gratitude, you know, how, how much work you put into this and how well you have handled, you and the rest of the staff. But you're the person who, that is the face of the, this compact neighborhood tiers, I believe. And the, to have had all the public input that you've had and incorporated it all and distilled the issues, you know, so nicely. And there, there, there's a couple of little things that, that I would like to see or know more about or see happening in the, in the next stages. And one, one is habitat planning in those, I don't know whether we have any, any habitat plans or any like wildlife corridors or anything designated, but it seems like that's gonna, that really, that would be needed in, especially in the Lee, Lee Farm area and maybe Patterson Place, where you got these huge expanses of, of open space that's gonna be, come urbanized very quickly, you know, that, and those, all those little animals are gonna be running around into the suburban neighborhoods next to them. And, and a lot, I'm sure a lot of them won't survive. But I, we've, I really have noticed that in my neighborhood in Parkwood from the, this development up on fifty-four that we approved a year, year or two ago, where then they now have it completely clear-cutting or doing the infrastructure and everything. And we're seeing, you know, a lot of extra foxes and, and deer and, and even a hawk or eagle or something, you know, that I think have probably run away from there. And of course, more deer are not a good thing. So, and then the other thing is on, at the Austin Avenue station, you mentioned the pedestrian and bicycle access, but bus access, and then I guess that's part of, that's more Go Triangle's responsibility maybe. But being at the end of the line there and the fact that East Durham is not well-served by the location of the station, which is, you know, it can be helped, that, but we should give priority to having good bus connections instead of in parking lots there, you know, or commuter park. And I think bus is more important than parking at that place.
Just, just one addition, noting that the East Durham National Historic District is either multiple districts or you're separating like Hyde Park, like there, there are various districts within there, just making sure that that's clear. So I'm looking at page eleven on the report and noting that for Austin Avenue, for number three specifically, and I don't know how many times throughout, but just noting that those districts are...
What page?
Page eleven.
Okay.
So the multiple Eastern National Register Historic Districts?
I didn't know you had.
Or you can separate out like Golden Belt National Historic Registry or Hyde Park National Historic Registry? Just noting that.
Commissioner Freeman, there, there is the Golden Belt National Register Historic District, and then the official distinction is the East Durham National Register Historic District. There may be distinctions within that, the National Register, but its official name is the East Durham National Register Historic District, which does not include Golden Belt.
Okay, yeah. So I just wanna make sure that Golden Belt is included and separated, so, thank you.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes, I, I too wanna echo the, my appreciation for all the work that you put into this. I got questions, though, about Austin Avenue. When you look at the other compact neighborhoods, you see the density, population density. But when you get to Austin Avenue, that compact district is probably the lowest population density in all of East Durham. You know, one of our goals in East Durham is to bring development to us. And how does this compact district help that?
Well, I think it is a step in the direction of trying to draw some more investment to East Durham. It does, at least in, in this area, these are, these are places that there's industrial businesses, a lot of vacant properties. So you could see some development happening there that wouldn't be displacing existing residents. The areas that are surrounding, surrounding the compact district are already fairly dense urban neighborhoods that will support transit usage. So, but I think that the compact neighborhood is, is a step towards drawing some investment to this part of East Durham.
I don't see that. One, you point out that land has brownfield problems, you know? And given that there is a chemical plant along the rail, two of them, and one gravel company, two of those, you see that as an opportunity for economic development?
I think that over time, and over time, I mean over several decades, the presence of a light rail station and a lot of other factors.
But the light rail is no longer coming that way.
Well, it might have a broader impact on, on the area in which those businesses can make their, their minds about whether that location is still the right location for their business or not. That's a, that's a private decision that they'll need to, need to make, and again, it'll happen over time. But it is, I mean, the presence of industrial businesses and brownfields can be a deterrent to transit-oriented development. But there's nothing we can do at this time about that. Those are still viable businesses.
Would you be willing to help us create a compact district that would bring economic development to us? That's not it. I mean, we have a railroad that there's no plan to tear down, a bridge. It's okay. I mean, I mean, we have, we have wonderful people in East Durham. We do. And we, we are a bedroom community. We have to go in, out of our community for goods and services. You know, we, we sleep, but we work out of the community. Recreation, we go out of the community. In order to bank, we gotta go out of the community. To get medical services, we have to go out of the community. So we have a real desperate need for economic development to take place in that, in that community. Can we have a compact district that will really work?
Well, I think, I think just to, land use strategies are one aspect of a broader picture. And certainly, in, in many of these areas, there are going to need to be other programs, economic incentives, that will help to spur development. So if we look at it as, this is just one piece of a, of a very complicated, larger pie. But I think that there will be the commitment there to, to work towards making that happen.
I have just one more comment, and, and I'm not being, you know, how that Malcolm said, you know, if I sit at a table and everybody has something on their plate, and there's nothing on mine, I can't call myself a diner. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Whitley, can I address him?
No.
There, there have been meetings for months on the location of the Austin Avenue rail stop, on the east side, west side, east side, west side. And of course, the east side is a preferred side, I think, for the East Durham area. And, and I'm gonna say this, for Durham area designers have looked at this, planned it. But the issue is with Go Triangle now. All of these months that there have been meetings, the city council, there have been meetings other, everywhere, I have surreptitiously sent emails to the East Durham, old East Durham group. I have not seen that many, if any, East Durham representatives there to voice their opinion. You can send emails to each other, but you've got to get out in public and make your wishes known. And, and we have, we're in the last, I'm, I'm, I'm talking right now, Commissioner.
Okay, we're not gonna have conversations between commissioners, gonna make you come in about the issues he's talking about.
We have, right now is our last chance. So I would, I would suggest that you get in touch with Go Triangle and make your wishes known. Go to the city council meeting and make your wishes known and your preferences. Maybe it'll do some good now. We're trying our best. But anyway, I, I just wanted to put that out there as, you know, it's gonna take effort from all of us.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Wonders?
I'd just like, like to say that I think the East Durham people have been pretty, pretty active in, in the deliberations here, and it's just a, you know, it's unfortunate that the, that the line, that the, the railroad won't allow the, the right, the train to go through there. But I, I think that the, the answer for East Durham has got to be improved bus, you know? And also the having, when Wake County, if they ever get their act together, you know, everybody wants for the, the transit to go to the airport and to RTP. And, and East Durham needs to be able to get to the end of the line as efficiently and cheaply and as possible. And, and then when, when they, and hopefully, twenty-five years from now, we'll get something going to, to farther east than East Durham, and it will be hooked up with the light rail. But, you know, I don't know whether, a compact neighborhood by itself is not gonna, gonna, just putting a compact district there is not gonna make development come there, I think, is what Hannah's saying.
All right. Thank you, Hannah.
As an Eastern resident?
And is your comment relevant to the presentation?
Yes, it is.
Or responding to what somebody has said?
It's relevant to both. I would like to say that the, the conversations that we've had with both the planning department as an Eastern resident and on the compact neighborhoods, as well as in the transit conversation, has been very well-attended and active. It doesn't need to be at a general meeting for all. It actually has been happening. And I think that the conversation is moving in the right direction, first of all. And then second off, the economic development that's coming into...
And then second off, the economic development that's coming into East Durham is already in line. I, I think that there's, this, just what, what Ms. Wind, Commissioner Wenders is mentioning is that this is not a land use aspect, this actually is an economic development. I would encourage anyone that has any comments or questions or any general purpose in, in being involved in East Durham, if you'd like to, you could, you could actually attend the Northeast Central Durham Leadership Council meeting in which these issues are addressed, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Scott, Grace, can you tell us what's coming up next month?
I'm hurrying, I had to go stretch my legs. Yes, so for next month, you have your continued case from October, which is the Farrington mixed-use case coming back for our next month, and then we have three zoning map change requests with associated plan amendments that'll be coming before you as well. There, most of them are in very similar, are very nearby locations. One is on Stirrup Creek Drive, one is on T.W. Alexander, and the other is at 5515 and 5517 and C-55. The first two are very close by each other.
Okay.
And are there, do we expect any changes in the proposal that we saw last month that's coming back next month?
For Farrington mixed-use?
Yes.
Yes, they have met with us and they have revised their plan some.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Olive Worth, it's been a pleasure. This is his last meeting, so best of luck to you and your endeavors. Any other comments? Pat, you have anything? Commissioners? We are adjourned. The little green button on your monitor, just push that and power it down.